Great.
Hey, people Laura, she has them too, and she had a.
I have to figure out how to come and get that other hikes in, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like the, all the raid.
All right, we're good?
Yep, yep.
All right, so it's two o'clock and we'll go ahead and call the, this workshop to order. And the item for discussion is the strategic action plan reviewing.
I think we got through a lot of this, um, a couple, a couple meetings ago. Uh, but I mean, we've got an hour dedicated to it, so I don't know if you just want to run through it all again. This is a living, breathing document, so, um, if you want to start backwards.
We ended up on three, right? Lighting, we, we did lighting and then we didn't go with financial. I think that's, if my recollection, my recollection is that's as far as we went.
Here, two, three.
I think we did, we, we went through one and two, and we're going to start three, and then we ended.
Okay, start three.
Yeah.
When, from the last, cause I don't think I was in the last one, when, when you guys went through the one and two, so where there, if there's any, uh, recommendations or changes, are we documenting that? Or are there any, so it, for items one and two, cause I, I wasn't at the, the, the last one. If any of these line items, if there was any, you know, input or change requests or anything like that, we, did you document those? Or?
Just, yeah, we had made, I made the edits from the last go around.
I think he asked me if it documented it here.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's, it didn't.
I can moving forward though, that's what you all.
Just, just to like, so like, if it was me, we were looking at, um, like the.
I normally hide line items, I don't delete them, cause then you lose the history. Um, so as we complete them, I hide them. Cause it's an Excel sheet. Thank you.
So do you have it to give him a summary of what we changed? I think there were four things.
I can, I can see.
So let's just, since you're near, I don't mind going through the beginning.
As we're moving forward, especially on one of these, so he, here's what I, want to discussion is, under the comments part, we have implemented the face approach, beginning with the playground pickleball and outdoor fitness. I think we should go back and have some discussion around the outdoor fitness. Um, but I think we're getting close. Um, this would be item one.
The comments part one.
One, one, under comments part. So I know when we were talking about the outdoor fitness originally, there, there was that, that, that grant or whatever.
That's sixteen thousand.
And the more I think about it, it's, I mean, I, I love the idea of an outdoor fitness, but it is so hot here, um, that unless it's shaded, then I don't know if we get the use out of it. Um, especially looking at the costs associated, I'd almost say, let's table that and let's either put something in its place. Um, or, you know, I don't know what the options are.
Well, the, the park plan.
It is face too.
I think that's, and that's what a conversation I had with Chelsea, there were two items in there, which I remember, and I mentioned, I was like, I'm, Doug mentioned that, and I agree, the outdoor one, would it be all the way at the end if, if we have it? Because I thought we remove it and the fishing pier. I thought those are the two things that I, so just, I'm going back and looking at the board pack.
And I'm trying to think two.
From what we have here.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's six pickleballs, one outdoor basketball, the two bocce balls, the three small picnic shelters, three large pavilions, two restrooms, the bench shell, the fishing pier, I thought we took that away. Playground and utilizing the, okay, we got that splash pad, all that, and then outdoor fitness. Because the walking trail was something, so those two things, the fishing pier might, I remember was removing, and outdoor fitness, I remember is removing.
And the fishing pier, we're, well, I got, I don't remember the conversation, removing that because of.
Well, first I mentioned to her, cause we would have to amend the permit, because we're not allowed to have fishing piers. But then you say you would have to amend the permit regardless. Um, because I mean, we do have, you know, I mean, I, I don't know.
You could leave it on the concept, so the conceptual plan was approved. Um, you guys did make some comments about moving the pickleball or moving the bocce ball closer to the court sports and putting some gardens and, uh, removing the beach volleyball, we removed that. Um, and we left it as green space, so I mean, later on, when we discuss the task authorization, if you want to remove that out of it. This is, again, this is a living, breathing document, this was just for us to get phase one done. Um, we've pretty much done that conceptually. Um, so now this really needs to be amended to, um, go into design.
When I think about just, I, I think it's going to be really important in this first phase, that we have amenities that are multi-generational, something that people believe would get usage out of today. And it's a diverse, um, usage population, you know, pickleball's a no brainer, everyone's playing pickleball, doesn't matter what age is, that's fine. Basketball, okay, if you're gonna have a, a community park, probably need to have basketball. Um, and then, uh, like some of the other things, I think we're right on, I think with our priorities, I think, you know, playground and that kind of stuff, I think we're right there. The only thing that really kind of jumped out at me was this fitness. And to me, that's more of a nice to have for the cost, I think.
Future phasing.
Yeah, the future phasing, or if there's something we want to plug in and it's placed, I think we're probably gonna have to cut something anyway, when you look at pricing. So, you know, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it, I just wanted to know if we had discussion on it, if it was still, you know, um, in discussion, so to speak.
Yeah, we can strike that from this, it's on video.
Just put an asterisk beside it or whatever.
So then.
So I'm fine with that, if you guys got through.
So we got, so one and we got to three, yeah, okay.
Ready for three.
Yeah.
So, so Carol, do you have anything? Any feedback on three?
I don't.
Doug?
Nothing.
Uh, the only thing I have is, are, are we still in alignment with our GIS master plan?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We're actually taking it to the next step, um, and trying to incorporate everything that, uh, P-PAC has implemented in Pelican and incorporating that into ours. We actually have a call with, um, Passerella next week to further refine our GIS.
Cause I think the nice thing about Pelican is it's accessible today, like you can go and, anyone can go and take a look at it, I think there might be some things that are restricted.
Yeah, there are.
So is ours accessible today or?
Not, no.
No.
Cause what really.
You've got some stuff.
The GIS on our side is gonna be more internal, and then we're, we're working to push live, it's called C-click Fix. Um, so it's kind of like a request for action, if you're at the soccer field and you see a swings broke, you can go on C-click Fix, take a picture, submit it, and then it, it does a whole like.
But our, and our, let's say phase one, intent is just to build the foundation capability for internal use, and at some point down the line, we want to do what Pelic did and make it maybe visible. If we deem it's.
You, you can't, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I think at Pelican, what we're doing is maybe just focusing on the big exterior things. Signs, you know, signs, lamps, lights, all that sort of stuff. Get that all into the computer, so at any given time, you can see what's there.
Well, and I think at Pelican, it's, it's like you have it, and you have the ability to make it visible to residents, so why not do that? So, just, I didn't know if that was our design or not.
As of right now, we're just trying to document everything on the gateway side, um, and trying to get that implemented in Cartograph, which is our work order system. Um, I think once we get through, I think we're on year three or four. Year three, so I think once we get through year four, um, you all can determine what we want to push out, what layers you want to push out to the public for.
And like with the photograph system, can you, let's say if we've got a vendor, we need to share, something with it, can you share access, or we just send them images?
Um, each user, it costs access.
We have to pay.
Yeah, we would have to pay, but we'd be able to export, like if there was work that we had done on, I know the utilities is really using it a lot, so like, um, if at Ed's house, we'd been there three times to repair a curb stop, we'd be able to go back and pull and extract that information and provide it to the vendor, yeah.
Ed, you have anything?
No.
Oh, was that even called?
No.
Okay, all right, so. And, uh, I just have one general question, so regarding the HR, is the plan that we're gonna do all that in-house or we're gonna, cause I think the Laura last time, it was kind of like a blend, right? I think Suzanne and you and Chris kind of work on some stuff, some stuff was.
It's a blend right now, I don't think we, we want to take that in-house, there's some unique components with it.
Okay.
Um, and really, it's not a lot, you know, as things come up, we'll reach out to those, our expertise, but Paychex does a lot of it, Laura, handles, you know, whatever, most of it on our side, so.
Do you have, is, this may not be on here, but, um, do you have a staffing plan? With, you know, let's say a three-year staffing plan with succession in there to know where you're at today, what's succession planning for today?
Yep.
And then based on.
It's back under C.
It's under C.
It's under C.
And listen, you guys can add to this, you don't have to just strike from.
Oh, succession planning and budget, and is that like a three-year plan, you know what? Or is it just current state?
Honestly, I just want to get it written down first.
If it's current state, I would also maybe as part, part two would be to make that a three-year plan.
Maybe we'll rely on your expertise with some of that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So then four, transparency, communication and response to this.
One of the things, um, yesterday in this room, uh, P-PAC held a, a workshop, and they were talking about, uh, this agreement that, uh, staff and some of the community association people have been working on. And I heard a lot from the members of P-PAC about having to educate the people in Pelican Preserve, that if, um, if it's a street, if it's a street light, if it's a sign, if it's a pond, if it's a whatever, you call the GSCDD, everything else, you call somebody else. And I was wondering, do any of you guys have that sort of thing where people wonder, you know, like who you are?
We put out a, we put out a newsletter and said, did you know? And then just go down through the things, the various topics, like our streetlights, we have streetlights that are the CDDs. We have streetlights that are ours, and we have streetlights that are FPLs. Did you know that? So if you live in Cypress Links and you've got streetlights out, don't get your bowels in an uproar over the HLA, because it's FPL. And FPLs fixing of streetlights is the lowest thing on earth, they won't do it. They just won't do it.
So, yeah, and I, we. Does that work for you guys? Just putting it in a newsletter?
You can get people to read the emails, yeah.
So we, we have a quick reference guide, we, we send it out twice a year, and usually in January, cause some stuff will update, and then we have, like, you know, just a summary, like this is our responsibility, this is the district, and then.
Like part of the newsletter.
Yeah, so the beginning of the.
January and June.
We send it out, we send it out.
January and June.
Yeah, I send it out twice a year, and then, and then it's posted on the website.
Trouble in ours is so many things that are, uh, time sensitive with either Comcast or ISN or entry system. The time you get it written and typed up, and the ink is drying, it's already changed.
And here's a, here's an idea, and I know.
Well, I was just kind of wondering what you guys have done in, in your areas.
Newsletters.
Because.
Well, there's an option, and I think it's gone over pretty well, um, in Stony Brook, when, when they have it updated and when it's working, but, because we have Comcast, and I think there's quite a few communities in Gateway that are using Comcast. Um, there's a channel, like we have a channel within Stony Brook, it's two fifty-eight or whatever.
You talking about community channel?
Community channel.
We're trying to work it out with the right name.
They don't offer them anymore?
Yeah, we, we've got it, but the problem is, is that right now, it's got, you, you can put up a, a display. The time for the picture, let's say you have three pictures, five seconds.
On the channel?
Yeah, on the channel, when, when it flashes up, I don't care whatever the subject is, whatever's on that screen is there for five seconds. We've been working with the people in Philadelphia to try to get five changed to at least twenty. And you would think we're asking for the world, it, it's ridiculous. Uh, and we negotiated this as a part of our contract two years ago, and here we are two years later.
Still trying to get.
We're still trying to get it. But it, it would be great to have it, because then perhaps you've got a chance that if somebody is at home and they, go into the, the remote community channel, they got, you had a better chance of them looking at that than they do when we send them an email. They just will not read our emails. If you want something in an email, anything of importance, you better say it in the first three sentences. Because if it's at the end.
Yeah.
Forget it, they don't read it.
And do any of you try mail? Snail mail?
Expensive, our, our property management firm charges so much money for, uh, preparation of and sending out of, uh, mail, whether it's registered or regular mail.
Okay.
So what we've been doing is we have our access control, in fact, this, this morning, he went over to the post office, bought a hundred stamps, cause we had seventy-five select owners that aren't getting the message that you've got to get on this ISN app, to be able to get guests and vendors into the community. So we're sending them an email, which we're positively, cause convinced, they won't read it, so we're gonna put it in envelopes, and send it to them, with the hope that.
Red receipts are amazing.
With what?
Red receipts, I'll show you later.
Okay.
That confirms that they read the email.
But, but the big, the biggest problem, the biggest problem is, is that, uh, uh, getting them to read all of it. It, it just, they, they don't want to do it.
It's that and the fact that, I'm sure if we were to do a survey on where do you get your information from, uh, it would be all over the board. It would be everything from, I get it off Facebook, I get it through email, I get it through my neighbor, Bob, cause he knows everything that's going on, or I go through neighborhood, you know, like so many different things, and unless our PR person is, and, and I think we've done a much better job over the past probably year, I mean, since, you know, we've had someone in that position, we've got stuff being posted all the time, but, you're not, I don't, I don't know how you can reach everyone.
Well, the other thing that we're running into is with, uh, tenants, we now have two hundred and fifty of fifteen hundred units tenants. And contacting those people, a lot of these owners, all they want is one thing and one thing only, send me the three thousand dollar monthly check. They don't want to give these people any access to apps to get guests and vendors in, that, don't tell them how they get their car in.
Okay.
They don't tell them anything, so we've been sending letters to the neighborhood associations, which is where predominantly they're at in sub-associations, hoping that the sub-association will send out a blast, because they have contact with these people, they won't do it. That's your problem. Not our problem, that's your problem.
All right, so we're good with three, let's.
Well, and then one, one more thing, um, I thought that the banners were a good idea. Um, and for, uh, the events, you know, that we focus, and since we've kind of got a schedule now of the events, and we know when they're gonna happen, if we could spend a little money on.
That's on four. We'll talk.
I thought we were on four, transparency, communication.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, if we could spend some money on some nice banners that are gonna, so that you can change the dates, or, you know, slap another or something on there or whatever, but you don't have to change the whole artwork and everything.
Well, I, I have always been a huge advocate of like banners, um, we've been doing it for years, and, and when I've managed to, uh, a nonprofit, we did stuff in the community. It's the only way we'd get people to understand there's a campout, or there's an event, or whatever. Meetings, we used to list meeting stuff too, but I don't think that's as important, but the, the challenge is, is there, there's two, probably three locations, maybe even four, uh, where banners go. But if you just stick a banner up, it kind of looks like shit, um, you know, sometimes just because you're putting the banner up, I'd love to get creative and see how we can structure.
You got a nice banner, it doesn't look like shit.
Well, what I mean is like, even if you try to put it up nicely, I mean, it still goes up and down.
Your biggest problem is where we have located them in the past, where they are visible, the problem is, you better read quickly, or you're gonna have a wreck.
Right, when you turn in, so is there, is there, I'd love for staff to look into ways that we couldn't have, like, community boards, but not for them to look nice and stuff, we can change.
Digital, a digital community board, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I don't, I didn't say necessarily digital, but I, I'm open to whatever.
Well, probably at the comments would be the best.
We talked about that, when one, you know, when Randy brought in the two, the two, the two ideas for us, and then we shut that down, we said, let's just go with the regular one.
Um, yeah, a sign out there.
And stuff, and that would have gone in first, even before we did anything, cause then we thought, that was one thing, well, it's not gonna go in for a while. Like, well, no, because it needs to be redone, so that actually can go in and be like, the only one that will go in right away.
Yeah, but I think this is like, these are items that our PR communications person should be looking to all the time.
Well, a digital, a digital board at the new Gateway Griffin Roundabout, picking those three, uh, points of the acts would be as probably the, the best way you can get ahold of the majority of the people in the community. Your only ones that probably are gonna get left out on that are gonna be the ones that access, access on to, uh, Commerce Lakes East, which would be Daniels Preserve. They really don't have to go that way to, let's say, go to Publix or do it.
Yeah, sure.
The town to go to Commons or to a Commons Park or go to Griffin or the soccer park, they would go by. But predominantly, I, I would say eighty-five percent of the community goes around or will go around that roundabout, and would be seeing coming, going from the east going west, or south to north, or north to south.
They would be.
See a deal, again, though, the problem is, you've got to read it, somebody's gonna hit their brakes and have somebody run into the back of them as they were reading the sign, that's the problem.
Yeah, well, and, and I would say you would have a couple messages cycled, so let's say, throughout, throughout several travels over the, you know, you would see, you know, get we just forgot cool dot, dot org for all your information, follow us on Facebook at blah, 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 board meeting this Saturday.
Be repetitive.
You know, just whatever, just quick and to the point, but it has to look good, I've seen some that just don't fit in, you know, so, anyway.
Well, anyway, I would encourage signs and billboards.
Yeah, I agree.
Those are my only comments.
Totally agree.
Things being equal, the banners are fine. We find better ways to display them, great, if we go the route of digital, even better.
And then, then I, I will say that, and I think that was my feedback to Randy, I think the holiday banners, I think they, I think they were very busy and was very hard to read, and then put it into that black, the yellow barricade, they were, in any, it was just, it, it looked crappy.
It was too many words.
It was just too many, and then also the second set, I mean, I know the signs, I, my H-A signs are the ones, it's like a nice heavy sign, and, and then I have the, the numbers and the month that I can peel it off, and those are good for like five years, you know, as long as you don't get dirt on them, so I, I, I'll be in line with that, or just something, something like how we used to have, you remember the ones we used to have, blank? Very similar to this, you know, and just to the point. Okay. Uh.
Only for, only for events, signs and billboards only for events?
Meetings for events.
Meetings, we used to have it for meetings, like the, the Thursday, yeah, it, it was like, um, uh, CDD Thursday meeting, those are used to be wide, used to be one on Griffin by Hampton Park, entrance, and then also in front of Gardner, those are the two locations we had them.
Well, along that line, we have, uh, what's the, do we have any statistics on how many people visit our website? Out of twelve thousand people?
I don't.
I'm just wondering, what, what, what kind of a bang are we getting out of the website? How many people are really going to it?
Website analytics, and I believe you probably.
Facebook, we can, it's, it can there, they have tools, but the, the, you actually have to.
You have Instagram?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think that'd be at least, that, that'll give us an idea what the percentage is.
Yes, but I don't really.
People to know if that's a good way of, uh, communicating.
Cause that's what I did when I first started, changed the site, I could tell you how many people logged in, what page they went to, and which page they never went to, like what, so.
I mean, our goal, our goal on Facebook, it should always be certain numbers of followers or, or subscribers or likes, whatever, till we get to the number of the community that actually.
Can you guys, can you guys see this? Randy saw this the other day, and it's a digital board, all, it's, it's basic, but it says planning and zoning commission meeting, it has the date.
Yeah, that, that's nice, I mean.
That is nice.
Yeah, and I was thinking like right here, when we're in the roundabout, so there's this area right here, a saucy, cause we, we have to cut those streams, they're like, they're horrible, they're like dead. So right here would be the perfect location for it.
We just have to get a permit from the county.
Now, is it a, yeah, so this is, uh, digital deal that you program?
Yep. That would be ideal for the new admin building.
Okay, so, so you could program it from your computer.
See, this is what I was talking about, at putting at the three locations of coming in, back away from the actual approach to the roundabout, till where you got enough time to look at it. That would, that would be.
You just gotta see the pricing on it, that'll determine how many.
I'm sorry.
Have to see the pricing on it, see what we can afford, how many.
We can, we can get it in the school, there's a fee, you can get it on the electronic sign, uh, over here.
It's good, there you go.
They have a sponsorship program, and you can have there, they want a Griffin, it's, it's, the electronic sign is only gonna go next, twenty twenty-six. Okay.
Well, meeting, meetings and key events would be the, the big, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, if you live in the community, you don't know when we have board meetings, we have them at three o'clock here, first and third, Thursday, you know, like.
All right, so five. I have some stuff here, uh, do you have anything on five?
Uh, is, is L our new environmental person?
She's not new, she's been here for eighteen years, but she was.
No, I mean, is this a new responsibility for her?
No.
Environmental, whatever.
She ain't came back.
She's under the responsive, I mean, it's under her responsibility, everything, so I thought maybe she's.
She is our.
Got a new title to her name also.
You, you, you know my attitude, number three is, is, is a no-no.
And I'll, I'll, I'll agree with that, I think we're in a, like, you know, you are.
I know, that was you.
Do you want?
I've been talking about Latorals ever since I had the first day.
I, I think we're doing.
I'd much rather see aeration in our ponds is what we need.
I, I think Latorals in all ponds is way too general, I, I mean, looking at the water quality, looking at the, what we have, we're not having the issues that we're having.
It doesn't say all ponds, it just says four ponds.
But, but I remember when it was written, the word all was in there.
It was.
He didn't catch it.
It was understood.
Yeah, and exactly, so I, I.
Do you want to strike three?
I would, I would.
If, if you're not, uh, put something in there that would be restrictive, such as per, per, per permitted requirements or whatever, but.
But then we don't need it, because they're, all of them are meeting the requirements, we have no ponds that are not meeting requirements for Latorals, I would have just taken it out.
There's, I, in my opinion.
Case by case basis.
Yeah.
There's no reason to have this as a line item, if you have a pond standard.
Yeah.
It should be covered in the pond standard.
And it is, so I would have just, I would have just crossed that.
Just take it out.
Strike, okay. Man, one last thing we gotta do, yes.
And then the other thing that I have is under the conservation areas.
Oh, can I ask one question?
What's FPL build got to do with ponds?
Arous.
Oh.
Is the, is aerators not covered in the pond standard?
No, because, well, yes and no, the ones that are required for the development order are covered, and then there are many that are not covered, so, I guess Pelican started this a few years ago, implementing aerators, being proactive and doing that. While I supported it then, I think Bob has, and, and Doug think a little bit different now, I never thought from the beginning, talking to, you know, Ernesto and, and, you know, the pond watch group, I never thought it was a need for that much, because we're, we're in really good shape. And I think Bob and Doug at that time thought differently, but now I think they're more in line of, we may not need as much as we thought we did, which is more in line with what I think.
So, over the past two years, they have cut back.
Cut back, and that's what I believe, yeah.
Well, it's not only expensive for the capital cost, it's expensive for the operating cost.
Yeah.
That's the killer with the, the area.
So the position there is.
If I remember correctly, and Doug is the one to, that would know all the figures, but I think their, um, uh, electric bill has decreased by about twenty-five percent.
That wouldn't surprise me more.
Based on taking out a lot of things.
But this, this.
We were over aerating, we were.
But this number two is only developing a plan.
Yeah, so this is.
It should be a plan, a master plan and design criteria, because that was an argument we got into on the pond standards, that we wanted to make sure that we had one, one, one turnover every twenty-four hours, it's things like that, that's the type.
Yeah, so I think the way I'm, the way I'm conceiving it is, we've got our, our, um, our pond criteria, aeration is covered in there, but only limited, and so this is, um, to do, and an, an additional.
Well, we, we.
Aeration plan.
You can't take our sixty-two ponds and aerate them overnight, so we need to have a plan of how we're going to do those, and which are the most important, important ponds, okay? My thing is.
Let's move the target date.
That's.
Move it a year down the road.
Which one? Two?
Two.
Well, it's down, it's a year down the road right now, one twenty-five.
Yeah.
Should, we should take more to your joint plan.
No.
Oh, no, 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 I don't think so.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Our biggest thing is to look at these ponds and. Our biggest thing is to look at these ponds and we can go back, I, I know it's probably worthless data, but go back and look when we were doing, when we were going out and doing all the testing.
Yeah.
We had all of those ponds that we did, and we had all the criteria of which ponds had the, the, the biggest issues and what those issues were. If we could take, my thought is, if you start, if your concern is to meet a permit, well, the permit isn't the point of discharge. So you want to concentrate on the aeration on the main flowway. But the aeration in the main flowway is largely controlled by the water that's discharging into it. So if you discharge crappy water, low D O water into a deal and it's a big enough pond, it can have an impact on the D O and the main flowway. So now you got to balance do you aerate upstream or do you aerate the, the, the main flowway? That's something that needs to be.
And, and we kind of thought about that because I think right before seventy-five goes through Pelican.
That's correct.
And then the golf course, and we thought about that. But I, and then for going from this side, this way, I think one thing that we agree was keeping a hundred percent of Latorals on the FPL Eastman, because we kind of use that as the filtration before it gets there. So we know the water quality here is way better than what's because we know it's going to go down as soon as it hits Pelican.
But my point is, is that I think staff needs to be able to come up with data to be able to show us what the specific needs or where the specific needs of aeration are. Because again, it's going to take, I'm going to guess, three, four years at least to get all the aeration done. That, that survey just shows you where you would want to locate the aeration. It doesn't tell us that the pond needs aeration.
So then add for us to do that, it would require, you know, it would require going out there and sampling every pond like we did. Not the six samples that we take a, a month, that's not going to cut it. So if, if that's the intent.
Water quality test.
You have to start now.
Well, the other one you want to do is if you start taking, because they ran into this down at, uh, uh, Collier County. You come in to start adding aeration in ponds that haven't had anything done for over the years and they get the settlement. And if you've been, especially if you've been hitting them with copper sulfate, now all of a sudden you've got that stuff in the water and going out, and you've got a problem.
Well, what?
So we need to know what the chemical analysis of the sludge and how deep is the sludge in these ponds that when you go into airway, especially our, like our main flowway. What kind of havoc are you going to create by churning that up? We don't have that data.
Well, and I think we've seen extensive amount of building in our perimeter. And luckily that's going to come to, to an end at some point. But if we're not measuring on water quality on a regular basis, we won't know the impact of the development in these new areas that it's having on our ponds. And we won't know until till we see blooms or something catastrophic happens. And by that time it's too late.
It is absolutely.
Too late. So, I mean, we've gone back and forth around water quality testing, and we should be doing it.
Thank God, with the exception of Timber Creek. That's a couple of little outliers over in Pelican, the one to the south and Arbor, or not Arborwood, what is that? Plantation? Plantation to the south?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the little piece up there on the north end. Those areas have water come in from the outside that we have no control over. And then our basin here on this side, but the only thing we have is Timber Creek. And then that, that's stuff that comes across the, uh, from the airport on, on Daniels. That, that's it. The rest of ours, we're at the high point. So the water originates with us and goes downstream, except for those injections of water. And we have no idea of what, my opinion, of what's coming from Timber Creek.
Well, that's, that's my point, too.
And that comes right in at the worst place in our system to, to impact.
Yeah, yeah.
And it only comes through the white line here, right? Timber Creek only comes from the white line.
And, and well, it's.
It's supposed to come.
It's supposed to be coming, supposed to be tailing through, what's that name of the, uh, deal down here? Doesn't want to do the irrigation, right?
Daniels Preserve. Daniels Park, okay.
Worthington, what it used to be.
Worthington, Worthington. It's supposed to go that way. I'm not convinced yet that it goes that way, because I think it comes over the berm here and comes in.
Cause I know before they started, I, we, we had talked, L and I, and we went and we got a few samples. It was difficult because it was dry season, so literally we're moving bushes and trying to like find a little thing of water. But we got some samples, maybe three max prior to all happening, just so we would know.
But the one thing you could do on advanced testing, and it's very easy to do as opposed to uh, the B O D and all the other tests that we've been ran when we were doing those samples years ago and taking them up to, uh, Ernesto's office, is just run D Os. Run D O checks and see what the dissolved oxygen content is of those ponds in the neighborhood or in the area of where the overflow is at. And just see how bad the situation is. If the D Os are really, really low, then to me, that would be a target for that, that pond to be uh, high priority for aeration. If it's got a D O that's sitting there running at two point five, why, why are we doing it? Uh, it's wasted on.
Who's ultimately responsible for the, for the ponds? Do we have someone?
Oh, hi.
Oh, well, and Daniel.
I think they need to come up with a sampling plan to collect data such that we can make a good idea and determination of what the, uh, priority is. And there's nothing that says we have to do every pond. And I think Pelican's found that out.
I, I'm sure if we asked L, hey, what should we be doing in order to at any point understand the, the health of our ponds, what would a recommendation be? She would she would probably spend thirty minutes telling us what she thinks we should be doing.
And we do get it. Do you still see the yearly report that Ernesto provides to us? Okay, so I, I, I do get it, because I get it for my H A, and I, he does email the one from here. So he does compile and I, for Pelican too. So even though they take it, they, they keep their records, but he also sends like.
Is he doing example?
Yeah, he is.
Spots, spot.
Yes, he's doing, uh, we're doing six here. But that's the thing, if that's the route, you know, you need data, you need to start that now. And I know it's a non-budget item, but I, I definitely put this down because we need to.
We do samples.
But you only do, you only do six. You don't, like before, when we had a committee, we did every single pond.
Every month?
Every month, yeah.
Well, that's what Pelican does. Your group does, your volunteers go out.
But I think Ernesto didn't, it was too much. So he was willing to allow us to do six samples.
That's about what we did, six months.
But we rotated, we did, yeah. So sometimes we couldn't get it all because, you know, either, you're going to get to it, so we wouldn't do it.
So you're really only hitting. On, on every six months? I mean, you're.
Which every month?
Oh, every month.
And you're only, but you're only sampling. What I mean is like, out of all of our ponds, you're doing six, oh, same locations. Okay, all right. I thought you said you were rotating.
Then we were. Now it's just same six locations, that's it.
Which that could be.
Which are.
Could be good indicators.
Which I believe are to be the prone ones that we, we have had historical issues with in the past, or are of concern.
No, they're flowways. They're, they're key areas. So they get, they're gathering points of multiples. So then what we decided, so that covers on the pond standard. So if one of those tests go bad, they're bad, then we'll go back to three ponds that that dump into that particular area. And then that's how we're going to find out. So we'll go upstream.
So actually what we have now is not bad.
No, no, it's not.
What's available.
The resources that we have and the funds.
Funds, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I just want to see, so conservation areas, number three says provide signage for our conservation areas. I think I would like to just reward that to.
Update signage?
Replace, yeah, because it is required, um, signage and we have it.
I D?
I don't, well, this is provide signage for our conservation areas. We are required to have signage. We have it. A lot of them are damaged, so they need to be replaced.
What does it say?
Stay out of its conservation areas. Yeah, so.
Conservation area number one, stay out.
Stay, so that's the only thing we would add to, you know, we would have two benefits. We would just tell you the location, but so I, I just like, you know, I don't want people to think that we were suddenly going to start putting signs. We already have them. We're just replacing the ones that need to be replaced.
Yeah, we've got.
Good, too. As we replace include in our gerias.
What's the?
There you go.
Well, we've got a lot of, lot of, uh, areas where people will call. You know that area down behind the sixth hole? Well, if we had a sign down there that said, this is number forty-seven.
There's definitely a.
It would mean something. So you could do that in conjunction with a warning sign.
Sure.
Uh, you've been over Pelican, I mean, you could drive down that main boulevard and you can see numerous signs of what, what pond or what conservation area that is.
Is the, um, the location in between the school and the soccer park, is that one preserve area, conservation area? Cause there's, there's a, there's a strip that's in between.
In between them.
And then there's one that's, I think, where the fence is around it, where it's.
And we own one, and I don't think we, I, I think we only own one of them. I'll have to go back and look. Right over here.
Up Griffin?
Uh, in between the elementary school and the soccer.
Oh, okay.
There's one that, um, we maintain, it's almost like a cut through. Then there's one that's like just a muck area.
Yeah, that.
Okay.
You know, can anybody see that?
Okay, so we'll get to one of the six. Yeah, bye.
But I expand presidential council meetings, you, you run out of stuff to talk about.
I think quarterly is such.
I think quarterly is, I think quarterly is.
Where.
Expand the location.
There's just not many choices you've got of where you can go.
One of the club.
I don't think we've had an issue with, with locations. I like moving it around a little bit.
The trouble with doing it at the clubs, those people won't let you in.
We just say we're going to come visit you. And I hope they don't speed.
I, I served that one on a platter to you, and you didn't take it. The trouble is, is the, the timing, uh, with, with the club being open. Other than that, we don't have a place over there to, to go.
Well, we can look into locations.
Stony Brook and here, this is probably the most central.
At Pelican a number of times.
That's a good location. It's just, yeah.
Well, I wanted, Arborwood was nice, but I mean, you only got a hundred and thirty-six out of seven thousand people that really are in Arborwood that are in Gateway. So it's.
So you want to keep this on or strike it?
Well, I think you keep it on, but, but I, but what I mean, I think we've got to change the wording. Maybe, because to me, it's not about expanding the, the meetings. I think quarterly is fine. I think we should.
Expand pre, presidential council meeting topics?
Well, no, I, I'm thinking about just the communication. Uh, so we should be communicating monthly to all those presidents.
And now just so you don't like emails.
No, no, but the, it's, to me, presidents' council also includes, I mean, that's the H O A. So the best way to get information out, but one of the best ways is to send it to the presidents. They will send it through their local H O A channel. So at least they're aware of topics that they should be aware of. And two, anything we want to trickle down, we should be doing on a monthly basis. And then quarterly, we talk about big ticket items. We have, you know, uh.
Well, face to face.
Yeah, we have face to face. So I think it's maybe just, um, expand or enhance president council.
Well, hot, right now, that has just, well, it hadn't just surfaced, it's been surfaced, it's been bubbling underground. It's just golf cartage. We need to talk about that at the next meeting, this next week.
Well, I mean, every month, there should be an update on the roundabout. There should be an update on, you know, whatever. There's probably a handful of items that we should have our presidents.
To the impact people.
Yeah, that, that should be where. And then nothing else, they trickle it out to the H A. But it, it's like, you know, order of operation. If someone has an issue with the H A, they should, they'll probably go to the CAM or go to someone in that community before they come to us.
Good, good example of that. Did we make contact with? I always get, get screwed up with the name of it. Pinecrest related to the dog park relocation.
No issues there. No issues there. The last meeting, not this, yesterday's meeting, but the meeting before that. It was only one person and we asked her to come and talk.
Like us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because they, they called me up and said, what, what's the status of this? And I said, well, it's pretty well, pretty well done deal. We're going with it and acted like they just learned of it.
Yeah, I know.
That is one that you stay on top of, because at the ninth hour, I guarantee you, someone will come back on that street and they don't want the dog parks in their backyard.
Um, that's what I already heard.
I took a call as well.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm telling you, that's, if there's, there's a flag, there's a flag.
But they also e- equally dislike the.
The basketball.
The basketball.
Nice in front of a choke was at one of my other districts, two and a half years have worked on their gatehouses. Architecture renderings, focus groups, board meetings, big poster boards, website, materials, board meetings, presentations, et cetera. Put out the contract, the thing is ninety percent complete. They said, we hate it. We didn't know it was going to look like this. We didn't know anything about it.
Yeah.
I mean, and it, and it was, I mean, weekly, monthly meetings for about two years.
All right, we're gonna ban it there, future home of the dog park. I mean, right now, it's already.
And if we go to the church.
Okay, Laura, that'll get you some phone calls.
There is already a, on fence, it's a leash-only dog park already. It was always there. So we have, it's, they're, all the signs are there. They're going to have a say no matter what. I, and I know exactly what you mean.
Yeah.
The one I saw at Christmas Eve service was the church has put up a sign, no overnight parking on their, their deal.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah. I know I talked to Chelsea about, I've been visiting and there's people parking commercial vehicles with landscaping debris and, and open bed trailers parking across like three or four parking spots. I told her, I said, get our towing people to put a sign here and because it's not even residents. I mean, it's residents, but it's their commercial vehicle.
What our, our problem is, our covenants absolutely disallow commercial vehicles in the community at between midnight and six A M. So people who drive home their trucks for their S U Vs or whatever, and it's got advertisement on it. It either goes to the garage or you get taken.
Yeah.
And they're looking for places to park. And that church was a logical one to go over there and park. And I think that church set up is enough.
Cause I was actually there and I saw them coming in, and they were all from Eagle Point. And I mean, one, he had a washer and dry, it looked like they were like garbage pickers. He had a, like a rusty washer, a dryer. Yeah, I sent her a picture. I'm like, we cannot have. Yeah. And then, and then they, that was the day the fence went out. Somebody just took the fence. Okay. So number six, um, so we talked about president council. Anything else for?
What's the call-in podcast?
Yeah, I, what, what, what is that? What is a call-in podcast?
We will work on that. But Randy has to get me up to speed. He's.
That's.
A surprise.
I do love the idea of a podcast. We'll be stepping up.
Yeah.
I don't know if it'll wash your butt.
All right, so.
Nothing else.
Nothing else, nothing else to add, nothing else. We're good.
So we'll bring this back to you quarterly. I believe that's what you all discussed during one of your regularly scheduled meetings. Um, and again, this is a living, breathing document. As things come up, um, during your board meetings, initiatives or, um, tasks, we will add them to this, um, provide progress updates quarterly. You'll notice in your agenda packets and items that we've changed one of the, um, items to identify, uh, for each agenda item, what, uh, core area does it hit? So as you review the agenda items for this afternoon's meeting, you'll be able to see um, what core area each agenda item hits, if you print them or we'll pull them up later so you can see.
Well, is that what that meant?
Yes.
Okay, so take a break.
Take a break.
Well. So. So take a break.
Take a break.
Well. All right, let's go ahead and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll go ahead and have roll call, is this working? Yeah. So we have Carol, Doug, Ed, and myself, and then Bob is absent, right, he's not.
Correct.
All right, so I need a motion for the approval of the final agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll go ahead and jump to public comments, and just as a reminder for the board, let's just give the if any speakers, the whole three minutes, if we have any questions, let's do that after they speak.
And again, like you said, three minutes, uh, first up, we have Marty Mantenfell from P-PAC, um, open meeting laws, rules for engagement.
Hi there, Marty Mantenfell from Monticello and also P-PAC. So, uh, I'm looking for rules for engage, let me explain what I mean. Okay, so I go to a Pelican Preserve Safety and Security Subcommittee meeting. Okay, they have four members there, which is a quorum, it's facilitated by staff personnel. The meeting is recorded, also in attendance are two members of this board and three members of the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. First up on the agenda is FPNL's proposal for street lighting. Okay, after they put their presentation out, for the next hour, two P-PAC members are debating the issue. Don't know whether or not that breaks um um open meeting laws or not, I was there, I kept my mouth silent because I didn't want to have a quorum or whatever. So, uh, I'm looking for rules of engagement. When can I uh speak and when can, do I need to keep my mouth shut? I know, uh, I I know it's hard to believe that I can keep my mouth shut, but I actually didn't comment during this meeting. But, uh, I went to Tony's thirty-page slide presentation on open meeting law requirements, you know, didn't do it for me. Uh, I'm looking for something on rules of engagement, simple eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper that tells me this is when you can talk at other meetings and this is when you should stay silent.
Okay, so that's it?
That's it.
So I will have Tony work on.
Trusting it today?
No, no.
No. No, I'll have you actually.
I'll work with Chelsea.
And then we set that out for.
Yes.
And and I, and I think, like, just like an FAQ or something, short document, but being able to give some examples, like, that's a good example, if you're at this meeting, you have these participants, this is the order of um.
Well, and well, the important part is how those meetings.
How it's posted, right?
Yeah, how they're noticed, that's the key. It, the important part is, uh, how are the meetings noticed? Is it noticed similar to the board meetings here that talks about members of other committees may be in attendance? That we've talked about before, that's the, that's the key, and I'll work with Chelsea and Laura with regards to making sure we have uh resolved it, appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
But we have that one page, I haven't seen it for some time, but we have that one page form that basically outlines the protocol for the meeting.
It used to always be.
Something simple as that.
That's correct, it used to always be at the beginning of the agenda of a meeting book, yes.
Why couldn't we just create something like that?
Uh, we'll work with Chelsea and Laura, we can do that, yes, good idea.
To me, the biggest thing is, is it's.
We have it, okay, she found it already, it's a little tweaking, but yeah, okay.
To to me, the real responsibility falls with the chairman of calling out the meeting and having the meeting continue and comply with the rules.
Yeah, we have, there are some protocols in the quorum that the board adopted, the committees and subcommittees, and so I'll work with Chelsea and Laura to make sure that that's referenced, advised in in the summary form, as well as ensuring the notices comply.
Yeah, but I think what Marty was saying is the conversation was taking place by others.
Correct.
So, yeah.
So.
And engaging the FPNL contract.
So the chair allowed it to to continue.
That's correct.
Yeah, that that's where the problem is.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and call the next speaker, please.
Right, uh, next up is Margaret Feinberg, it says Stony Brook Hold Harmless Agreements.
Margaret Feinberg, I'm Stony Brook in Gateway, and I am representing the board today of Stony Brook. Um, we've got this separate hold harmless agreement for uh the resurfacing project of the roads in Stony Brook. And it's kind of a confusion for me as to why we're having to sign a separate hold harmless agreement when inside our operations and maintenance agreement, we basically hold the district harmless for everything. It's a blanket, we hold you harmless, we don't, we're, we've got you as a s- additional signature on our liability insurance, so I'm not sure what the purpose of this separate.
Agreement is?
Agreement is, I, since we already hold you harmless for anything and everything and you're on our insurance policy, why are we signing a separate policy? Our separate agreement.
Is this for the road policy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Absan.
Okay, so uh before we go, uh, I need a motion to allow Bob to join uh the meeting remotely. Bob, you're muted.
Find the exceptional circumstance.
There we go.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion in a second?
Second.
We have a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, okay, so.
What 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 precipitated the need for the the second document?
The hold harmless agreement was directed by the Board of Supervisors in conjunction with the approval of the asphalt pavement restoration contract in the event the HOA takes over the roads in the future, this would hold the district harmless um for if and when that compliance occurs.
Yeah, I think, I think the impetus for that was the discussion and concern with regards to some subsidence, apparently thinking of some areas and there's a concern whether the surface or subsurface had issues. Uh, I think that was number one.
Like, either that the question was, is that if we already have given him the whole harmless, what sounds like double jeopardy?
That's not totally true.
Yeah, because I don't think includes the roads, right?
Well, the the whole harmless in the agreement, I tried to, I was having outlook issues today, but the agreement in paragraph six and thirteen of the current agreement, operation and maintenance agreement talks about indemnification of harmless, paragraph thirteen. Well, and this just came up today, Randy sent out the letter back in December fourteenth or fifteenth, I believe.
Fourth.
Fourth, wasn't that, oof, okay.
So so in other words, this is supplementing the one that we've got because that one doesn't cover the subject.
Correct, because that one covers their obligations and responsibilities under the agreement, which is the operations and maintenance, not these kind of capital projects. That's why, okay.
Does that answer your question?
That answered my question, but then we'd like to have two things added to this before we agree to sign it, and that is subsurface matters that it's excluding existing CDD-owned infrastructure. We're not going to be responsible for CDD-owned infrastructure if it were to be damaged, like sewer pipes or anything like that. And the uh utilizing district funds, that should be clarified that that is oh oh four Stony Brook funds, not this makes it sound like it's general funds, so if we get those two things, then we don't have a problem.
Margaret, if you could just email those comments to us, that'd be great. Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret, I appreciate it. I appreciate it all.
I don't, there is no other, no one else signed up, nobody online and not any, there's nothing else that hasn't already been passed on.
All right, perfect, so local achievements and recognitions, do, does the board have anything to mention?
I don't.
Staff? All right. Advisory committees and items to report, um. Were you hearing it then yesterday, anything? At the P-PAC, uh, the Parks and Recs meeting?
Oh, yes, on Tuesday, I was at the Parks and Rec meeting. Um, you're gonna come up to a couple items in the agenda.
Okay.
That uh they had, but mainly the discussion was about the cost of the um engineering contract.
Okay. Uh, approval of minutes?
Oh, I have one, one from P-PAC.
Go ahead.
Uh, they had a workshop yesterday to go over the service provider agreement and the proposed resolution. They had a workshop yesterday to go over the service provider agreement and the proposed resolution to add a seat for PPCA to P-PAC. They do have their meeting next week. Their goal is to have everything voted on and worded the way they would like it, and their recommendation is ready to present to this board on February first at your meeting.
Okay. All right, so approval of minutes?
I move to approve the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
That's us.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ed?
I move on consent agenda items nine, A, B, C, and D. These all deal with Pelican Preserve, and they are all different parcels that now will have easements, just like all the other easements we're getting for landscaping and other things. It's something that we've been doing already, but this formalizes it, just like we did for Avila. We did two others at our last meeting. This is four more.
All right, so we'll pull E and F.
Wait, hold on. Does, does anyone need to pull E and F?
I would like to pull F because I, I like to pull F.
So will you include E?
Sure. Yes, E.
So you're proving.
A, B, C, D, and E.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the consent items with A through E. All in favor?
Aye.
So.
You were talking about, yeah.
And by the way, I would like to commend Bob. Bob has been working on these four for Pelican Preserve, as well as a lot of the other ones, and he's done yeoman's work on it, so.
And we got it approved, and he wasn't here with the champagne. What was that time?
Oh, yeah, he's, yeah. He's, he's, he's a total wine right now.
Okay, so the hardwood tree trimming contract, we had one more that came in after. Is that one we want to talk about?
Yep. So we received a con, we have requested multiple, from multiple vendors, same scope and specs. We had attempted multiple times with Mainscape, being that they are, you know, our, our current service provider for landscaping. We finally received theirs late, past the deadline, past the deadline for the agenda to be posted.
This day being Mainscape?
Mainscape, yep.
Theirs are, their subcontracts.
I, I did not receive it in time. So it was past.
Concerns of debt issue.
So, but I just wanted to bring it up that we ended, we did receive it. It, they still would not have been the low bid. They were still missing proper MOT, so coastline regardless. If you had been reviewing all three of the bids, coastline still would have been.
We had a date time for receipt of bids, correct?
Yes.
End of subject.
Okay. So I need a motion for approval of the consent agenda item F.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, and I have a second by Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
District engineer, do you have anything?
Uh, no, not.
I just saw you there. I'm like.
Danny's here for some other items, but.
For the record, Danny Nelson would touch it. I have a feeling I'll be talking in a minute.
All right. Admin agenda items, and then I'll have you go over those.
You'll skip Tony.
I think you made.
Tony's after.
Take this one down, okay.
Great. You thought he knew?
No, no, it's for the.
I was reading.
Yep.
Thirteen.
He really wants to get out.
I did have a.
I'll see you. Tell the Swift crowd I'm number thirteen.
Go ahead. So.
Long day.
I'll move on agenda item eleven A for discussion.
A second, Dan.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The PRAC meeting that I went to on Tuesday, they discussed this. They, they did vote for it, to recommend it and bring it to us. However, they were stunned, I think, by the amount of the total cost, almost $400,000, and were wondering if maybe it could be phased or some other thing rather than awarding the whole contract. I just provide that for your knowledge.
Well, I, I had a question along that line. Danny, on your proposal breakdown, you had three ninety-seven, I think, was that the number, three ninety-seven?
Well, so let me just touch on that real quick. Danny and I had a conversation yesterday. Again, with the holidays and us trying to get the agenda out, we didn't have, we didn't have time to touch base. The number has since gone down, so the updated task authorization number, which reduces Tetra Tech's hours, because really it's oversight. It takes it down twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. So the new contract amount proposed would be three hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay, well, that, that's kind of my question. My question was, was whole Montez's cost to twenty-seven blended in this page that shows this?
Yes, and what you'll see, there's a column on the sub, and if you look at whole Montez's proposal, for the record, Danny Nelson would touch it again. If you look at the whole Montez, the numbers won't add up. The reason why they won't add up is because there's a ten percent markup on hours for carrying that as a sub.
Okay, so you took the whole Montez proposal, which was two ninety-nine, added the markup, and that's what makes it the three twenty-eight?
Yes, and then, so then what you'll, you'll see also, what Chelsea's talking about is we've got some work that we will have to do, some coordination between the admin building and Gateway Commons, primarily associated with utilities. But then we've got project management on top of that, and then just coordination. So I had budgeted for our project manager, four hours a week, basically. So Chelsea and I talked over, and we, we, we felt like if we could reduce that down to two and a half hours a week, which is essentially a little over five percent of the time. And that's a not to exceed, and so is whole Montez's. It's not to exceed.
Okay.
Okay, these aren't large enough.
Correct.
What, what's the dollar to answer, I think Carol's and maybe Park's committee's concern, is what is the construction cost dollar value associated with this design, design services?
I know.
What's our estimate of the, what this whole picture is going to cost?
And I don't know, but I do know that a lot of costing has already been done, right? You guys have already.
We're, so internally, we've got pricing on the splash pad, on the playground equipment, on the tennis, the bocce courts, the tennis courts. But the bigger picture, like site development, site work, utilities, we don't really have numbers yet. I mean, we're at literally zero, maybe one percent conceptual approval, so we don't have.
Well, I'm trying to find out what is the ratio typically engineering, while we don't do it anymore, a percent of construction cost of whatever that would be the design fee. I'm trying to get a, an idea, ballpark. Are we looking at a million, million and a half dollars? Because typically, six percent, seven percent, eight percent fee. Well, you take and divide this by point oh eight, and we're looking at three million dollars, which means an inordinate amount of planning and design to accomplish what would be a much smaller construction cost. That's what I'm looking for. What are we looking at? Because if we're designing something that's going to be anywhere near three million dollars, as far as I'm concerned, send this thing back to the drawing board. That's way too much money. I'm not willing to spend that kind of money on the park project for phase one.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's not anywhere near that now.
I don't know if whole Montez has done a conceptual level opinion of cost. I think as far as phasing it, it's easier to phase construction than it is design, and that's largely because you've got to do site development for the entire site, so you've got to put in all your.
I understand that that comes into play, but my thought was, is that, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have four hundred thousand available as a park, as a grant, impact fee or something?
We have a little less than four hundred, three hundred and some change.
Okay, and what do we have budgeted as match with that to cover the cost for all of this?
So there's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the commons construction from the bond.
Okay, so my question is, if it's five hundred and fifty thousand, we're using three hundred and seventy-five thousand for design-related services, does that mean that we have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to spend for construction?
Plus the park impact fee monies.
Plus the park impact fee money, so, which is four hundred. So we're looking at a design-to-construction cost of one to one point five to one ballpark. That's.
It's a large site.
That is higher than a kite.
Fifteen-acre site. That.
Now, that, that's a number to get back to the park committee, that it looks like that we're going to be spending about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, granted, like Danny said, there are services that have to be performed that would be associated with possible work in the future, but you've got to do it now, because it's all got to tie together.
Well, I mean, one question, and again, I hope this comes across the right way, but the park committee is to be a part of the voice, unless they have engineers or experts on that committee. I don't expect them to challenge our district engineers' quote or or what the district's plan from an engineering or execution would be. And I mean, with all due respect, you know, for that committee.
And keep in mind, these are, like Danny said, not to exceed numbers. I really don't like to do some numbers. So the not to exceed, it, we talked earlier about the outdoor fitness court and the, and the, in the overlook. You cross those off, and that's a cost savings right there. They're not going to do the design work.
I did it super, super fast, so I went back to the original, and I know the prices are way off in some of the whole Montez stuff. So I went by memory and by what the price that they have here. So it's, it's around nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for everything that's in there, and I did not remove the outdoor stuff, the outdoor equipment. I mean, the.
Does that include, does include this engineering?
Did that include this three seventy-five?
Yes.
Okay, so you're looking at about six hundred thousand then, in actual construction cost, which is now, we're basically.
And then I, and I, yeah, and the only thing that I had to up, I think they had three pickleballs, and I think we wanted six, so I just doubled that amount. And the garden, I, I kept everything, whatever price that they had.
The price from what, three years ago?
Yes, which we know is higher, but I hate pulling numbers out of the air, so I prefer to look at this and then see, okay, what is the increase in the last three years? It's a more accurate guess than just sort of calling out numbers.
Let me just say one thing. Where do we, so prices definitely will be different today than it was three years ago. That's up for us to go through planning and design to figure out what, what we can build, what we can afford, and what's the timeline?
Well, the other, the other one, what you can do in that is we set up, when we put the plans together, we put together a bid schedule that allows us to take and pick and choose these, should the costs exceed our budget.
Well, sure, yeah.
And then we make a decision which way we want to go.
So let me, so we have, we have budgeted one point five with all, all in, whether it's bonds and impact fees. Didn't you say about one point five?
No, we're less than that.
Nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, closer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so around nine hundred thousand. So we will either need to figure out what we can, yeah, I think it's close.
It's, yeah, it's very close to.
It's close, it's close to me.
My rough.
Yeah, it's about one to one.
If we're going to build what we can, what we have funded to this, to this point, we'll have to either scale back certain items. Or a.
Or find alternative funding.
Or, or on the front end. Now, this is a not to exceed, but, but this is like, I mean, this is a large portion of the budget. What, what was the percentage of the initial estimate? Do you see what the percentage of the engineering cost was?
I don't think it's in here. I'll bet, let's see.
At my own point, it's like, how far are we off from the original? Because we made all of our budgeting concessions based on what we had originally, which was nine, nine hundred and a half, almost a hundred, a million in, in budgeted items. Construction or engineering would be X amount.
Well, I, I will readily admit I am not an engineer, but it seems to me if your project is about a million dollars, and you're going to spend a third of it on just engineering, that seems a high percentage to me.
It is, is, is the professional service, I guess you don't have it in front of you. The professional services under the soft costs, it's six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That is all professional services, right? Exceptional of legal, because legal, I have a different line item for that. You see it?
You're referencing the.
Whole Montez, yeah, because I guess that's.
Three hundred thousand, actually.
Yeah, but, but I guess he did less, so I'll take, I'll take his price than what they.
So keep in mind sixty, ninety percent design. So at each of those phases, it'll go in front of PRAC committee, it'll come in front of you. They'll, they'll provide an engineer's opinion of probable cost at each of those phases, understanding that thirty percent, it's going to be pretty rough, sixty percent getting closer, ninety percent, then you're close.
But the key is the scope of the work they're doing their design on, both of them, is enumerated on the first page of the contract.
So if that changes.
That is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if, if that scope changes, then the, the overall effort changes as well, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I mean, this is a not to exceed, so again, it's, it's a big number, but at the same time, we, we control the.
Thirty percent, you say. See that, right now, we don't want to design the amphitheater. That is a large architectural cost.
Yeah.
Well, the, the issue is, is that the only thing that we have to go back on was the twenty-five thousand dollar study that we had done a year and a half, two years ago, that gave us some ideas of cost. At this point in time, I don't, unless somebody knows that I, I, something I don't know. I've not seen a, for every one of these bullet points on the first page, what the estimated construction cost of each of those are. And that typically is something that we should expect in the way of preliminary information to be making a decision on. You're right, the number is high, but when you throw in the things that are necessary, that have to be done, that are outside the scope of just doing the design for these.
To get there.
That, to get there, that adds to it, so I understand that.
So I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, it's not comfortable with the cost today, but it's a not to exceed. I'm comfortable with it. Ed, are you comfortable with?
I, I just was trying to figure out where we were going with it and what the money was, but right now, we're looking at, if we spend three hundred and seventy-five thousand, if we spend three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and let's say the number is nine hundred and, nine hundred thousand. That means we have five hundred and twenty-five thousand to devote to constructing.
And that could be a phased, that could be a phased, additional phased construction and funding effort.
I can't hear Chelsea once she's talking.
Sorry, there you go. I pulled out tone. Once.
Gotcha.
Once you have permitted plans and design work done, it's a lot easier to phase construction. The hardest part is truly the site work and the utilities. Once that's done, then I'll.
You phase out whatever you should be now.
It's simpler than coming back and doing it as an extra.
Yeah, we got to start.
If you're going to pay.
This is the way.
You're going to pay double doing that.
Are, are you comfortable with this?
I'm, we, we sat down and revised it. I'm comfortable with the revised version that, that is being presented, understanding it is a not to exceed, and Tetra Tech knows that we love to give comments, and we intend on giving lots of comments at thirty, sixty, ninety percent design.
I saw your face.
Hey, no.
I know. Glad you showed up in person for this today.
I felt it just as important.
It's been like four years.
If there's no additional questions, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I thought Carol already proved it with.
I, I did.
So we have a motion by Carol. Would you like a second?
Oh, second, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next.
Now, you're signing the agreement with whole Montez. We're signing the agreement with you.
Yes. The next item is a change order for the Public Works Maintenance Building. When the scope was originally drafted, it was only to really incorporate the previously designed RV park concept and plans with a, the building that we had designed here. It didn't necessarily include the conversion of the dog park to into a parking lot. So this change order encompasses that additional parking area.
Forty, the forty-six thousand?
Yeah.
Say it again.
Forty-six thousand? Forty-seven, really?
I'll make the motion to approve change order number one for the Public Works Expansion work.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you, Danny.
Um, agenda item eleven C. I would like to table this until our first meeting in February. We have, I believe, as part of the original O and M agreement, there was a section that detailed documents and stuff that had to be given to the district during the ninety-day period from the time we voted to cancel the agreement until, and I think the date that was mentioned yesterday was January twenty-third.
Correct.
So I would like to see if those documents appear, and if any of them help us to resolve this. And so I'd like to postpone this, to table it until the first meeting in February, which would be February.
I have, okay, I have some, I just have some questions for clarity, because I did reach out to Chelsea regarding this today. So this was previous, there was not the current management company, right? They were holding those records. Castle was.
Castle was the management company. KW is the current one. They've been there about a little more than a year.
Okay, and, and I know I'm gonna ask you, but I know you may not know the answer. Record keeping, because I, I, I did work with Castle before, and so that concerns me. So, so while I, I can sit and say, well, let's just wait, because the O and M agreement does state that they have to produce all the documents, but they cannot produce documents that they don't have. That's my concern, so then we're just delaying it. And reading the audit
The auditor is on the call.
Okay. At this point, it's two route, either, either a forensic audit, if they're not willing to provide the information, that's the route that I would take. And it's gonna be on their dime, because here we are pretty much begging for the information. I know we've made our demands and it, you know, first week, second week, first month, we're working on it and it doesn't feel like that anymore. The action speaks very loudly. So it would, for me, I would be either
Right, this has gone on for a number of months.
So, so, so while I, I love hearing it, but the action speaks very, very loudly. And my concern is they cannot produce documents that they don't have. And I'm going to go with my personal experience. And, and I also believe that if they have the documents they would have provided to us, I don't think their intent is to hold anything from us. Um, so that concerns me. And, and you know, the, it was inconclusive and, and we're just going back to this. And if we do a forensic audit, I would like to go back a few years too. Cause I, I, the more I looked at it, then the more questions I had and the less answers I had. So I think this is just, it's not gonna go away fast. Does that make sense?
Correct.
The, the, uh,
But
Two pages. That way.
But we asked for certain documents. I don't know if those documents would be in all these other documents that are supposed to be given to us or not. Maybe they just gave us what, what they had of what we asked for, rather than everything. I don't know. I really don't know.
But what I don't understand is I did not get a warm and fuzzy feeling reading this two-page deal from the auditor. That, that was, that wasn't good. Uh, I like the idea, if we're gonna extend the time, let's extend the time with the understanding they go out and hire the forensic auditor to provide the documentation you just described.
So I wanna, I wanna be clear. The funding is being held by the community association. They have notified us that they will be closing the account or that they were going to close the account at the end of last year. I don't believe they've closed it yet. I think they're trying to wrap up loose ends and transfer what they believe to be due to them um, tomorrow, and then write us a check for the, the, the remaining amount.
But I don't think that's what Tony requested of them. I think, uh, I think the only agreement does say that they should not close it, I'll give you a notice, Tony, refresh my
We, we've sent, there have been numerous communications primarily with Chelsea and a couple of me with regards, don't close it out until we resolve all this.
Correct, that's what I
It seems as if the association's position is, we're gonna do what we're gonna do because we wanna do what we wanna do. Uh, and the auditor had some concerns, I mean, if he's on the phone for an appointment about records, he did not get the, he requested, as I understand it, from the accountant for PPCA. And, uh, that's concerning to the state.
Very concerned.
Well, and secondly, if, if the board's inclined to continue this, oh, for clarification, my math tells me that the ninety days runs out January twenty first, because it's ninety days from the date it was sent and it was in October, uh, the letter. And so you have thirty one days in October, thirty one days in December, and so you end up the twenty first is the, the correct day. So, uh, Thursday, January twenty number, just for clarification for the record, but, um,
Well, to be clear, so, um, our auditor had requested information, they were given information. Um, the original request was, I will admit, uh, a lot, that it was basically requesting all records back to the very start of the O and M agreement. Um, they, they, the auditor reduced that request from basically twenty seventeen to twenty twenty two or to the most current. Um, they did an analysis, provided a worksheet, um, that reviewed what, based on the information what they had. Um, and Jay, again, is online, he can probably go into more detail. Um, the community association requested that worksheet. Um, rebutted items in that worksheet, rebutted items in this letter. Um, basically, we're at a standstill where we, both, both parties disagree. And per the O and M agreement, as of the twenty first, it seems that, uh, all documentation, uh, is supposed to be turned over to the district or by the twenty first at least.
Uh, Chelsea, Chelsea, can I?
We can hear you.
Yeah, um, when this first surfaced, which was months ago and before we terminated the O and M, or put a date for terminating the O and M, um, my understanding was that we were trying to come to a accommodation and that the purpose of the audit was that we could reconcile the district's position for appropriate receipts and the PPCA of what they were offering. And I thought you were gonna come to, uh, some kind of a resolution, okay? Maybe we can't come up with the whole hundred and thirty four, but we, we're satisfied with ninety and the difference is thirty. That's what I was expecting to come out of this, but what I think I'm hearing today is we're no closer than when we started.
That's correct.
That's correct, and that's, that, Bob, that's exactly what my concern is. Because I think if there was the other way around, we would be in a very, very di- different position. I think nine o'clock in the morning, they'll be at the door. And I just, I, I just don't see any progress of anything and it's, it's, it's black and white, there's no way even getting into the middle of it. They're not, they're not, not responding to me, they're just not.
Well, from talking to Laura, it seems that the majority of the activity that's in question and the excess amount that, uh, the district might have paid to, into the account, into the reimbursement account mainly happened around the time of the, time of the turnover from Castle.
Twenty twenty?
No. No, twenty three, no.
Twenty two.
Twenty two.
That's when the, that's when the big current thirty six thousand dollar transfer happened was in twenty, November of twenty two. Those a year ago, that that happened, but, um,
But it's about twenty twenty.
Yeah. There's, I have questions, this things, since I've been here in twenty twenty, I came in June of twenty twenty, I questioned some of the transactions that had been going on and was always danced around and never got straight answers from anybody, so.
What's, what's the level of effort to do what you described in a timeline such that we would extend this to that timeline and tell them to keep this account open?
I think you should ask Jay that question, not me.
I didn't know if you've done it.
Jay, are you online, can you hear us? Jay?
Yes, Tony.
Before Jay pipes in just real quickly, for clarification also, the, the agreement, the
Nancy?
Pursuant to the agreement, the agreement is terminated ninety days after they received the notice of termination. So that's January twenty first.
Okay.
Then the agreement also says, under paragraph twenty one, within thirty days of the termination date, which is January twenty first, that's when they're to remit and deliver all of the records and documents relating to and associated with the performance of the, by the PPCA under the agreement. So it's actually not the termination date, the ninety days, it's thirty days after that.
Yeah.
So it's the February
Well, that's my point, can, can the, uh, accounting that Flavia had described being done, can that be done in, let's say, thirty days such that at the February meeting and be within what you said, so it'd be around February twenty first?
Yes, sir.
That they report back to us, uh, their findings?
Jay, would you be able to answer that question?
So
My, my point is that I don't think we have to go back years and years. I think if you just take three or four months before the turnover time and to my knowledge, we have, we have controlled all the finances since that time. So we don't need to go any further than that. I think a relatively short period of time and see what documents we have. It will prove one way or the other.
If I can try and, so there was an Excel sheet of thirty plus items, um, question, that the auditor Jay questioned the transaction. Um, and he had requested that, the detail information for those transactions, those thirty some transactions from the community association and their auditor, and I received a note back that they have no additional information to give.
So, and so that's my concern, because if they don't have the information, it doesn't matter how long they give it to them, they cannot provide that and that concerns me. And while I get the four months, it's great, but I think for me is when I get the, the forensic audit, and if there's a lot of stuff, then I'm going to be looking at, okay, if it happened in this time period, did it happen for how long more and how long can we go back?
And you're suggesting we pay for the forensic audit?
Well, I would say yes, because you've been able to provide the documents to clear up this. And so it's on their benefit to say, here are all the documents, Laura, you go through it, or Jay, you go through it. But they're not doing that, so we, I feel like we don't have a choice, but to look at that, yes, Tony.
I guess the question for Jay Gaines would be if Jay's able to hear and participate is would, if his firm was retained or some other forensic auditor to perform the forensic audit, would they need to have all the documents and records from the association that Jay has already requested and not yet received in order to have a good, complete forensic audit?
What do you do if they don't have it?
Well, that's, that's, that's the, um, for lack of a better term, the sixty four thousand dollar question. Because if they don't provide us the, the detail, then the forensic audit won't, won't do anything. You know, we're, and, and at this point, you're also talking the, the latest numbers that I heard was that you'd advanced them a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I think there's about a sixteen thousand dollar receivable that they claim. So that would get you down to maybe a hundred and four. And then it's a hundred and thirty six, and you're, you know, you're talking about thirty thousand bucks. And that's, that's what the forensic audit might cost you. And so, um, cause you're gonna have to look at every transaction. And so, you know, maybe the thing to do is get back to them and see if you can't get somewhere in the middle.
Well, it, but, but This is Bob, this, this is Bob, wait a minute. Is the, is the core question, and this is a simplistic view, but we gave them money to pay bills. They paid bills and all we're asking for is the receipts for what they paid to make sure they were district responsibilities.
Correct.
Is that, is that the core of it?
Yes.
Yeah, and the issue is
Well, that should not be difficult. That would be very straightforward. I wrote a check, I paid this bill, here's the bill.
And That's gonna go the other way, Bob, is if, uh, the association did not provide documentation, documentation to verify the hundred and thirty four was overdeposited.
Give it back.
Well, how much of it do you feel, or what, how much of it were you given information to feel confident about? Which would then tell us what Bob is asking for is what's the differential? What are we arguing for here or?
And, and I don't know that it, that it's confined to a certain time period, as Carol said. I mean, we were going on trust that it was correctly spent, but you know, uh, now you're just asking to provide the document date, this, this should not be mysterious.
Well, when you do the forensic
I think that the, the number that you're talking about is that, um, you advanced a hundred and twenty thousand dollars according to the last information that I received from Laura, ninety thousand originally and an additional thirty. So that's a hundred and twenty thousand bucks. And so the total in the accounts, a hundred and thirty five, so you're talking fifteen thousand dollars. And they should write you a check for a hundred and twenty. And then you pay the bill normally, because I think they're saying that they've submitted sixteen thousand dollars worth of bills that aren't paid yet. Which was in, um, that memo from Shane Mulder that I got.
I think we're missing the
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting all confused.
But I think what's most important here is we follow, what is the action that we need to prove here today? Cause we're not gonna get to the bottom of this, there's, you know, there's more due diligence needs to take place. What do you need from this board in order to move forward?
Well, you know, I think that from, from my viewpoint, I, I, I don't need anything from, from you guys. What we need is the documentation from Pelican Preserve that they've told us isn't available. And so at this point, you, you gotta, he said, she said.
If they don't provide the documentation, okay? And we're at a hundred and thirty four, eight eighty seven, I don't know what to deal with the one twenty and the ninety and the thirty and all that. But what's on this report is a hundred and thirty four, eight eighty seven. If they don't, let's say, provide documentation for thirty four, eight eighty seven of it, we ask them to write a check for thirty four, eight eighty seven, is that not correct?
And that's what originally Tony asked them to do. This is no different than Stony Brook. Why are we, you know, one, one, and, and, and they comply. So, so if they wanna take their time, great, write us a check for that amount, take your time. And then when you have your receipts, we reimburse you. They don't wanna do that neither.
That, that, to me, that's the only option. You can't do it any other way. I don't, somebody's gotta produce documents.
I think, Flavia, you referring to the letter that went out June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three?
Yeah.
Their original demand letter that, that worked with Chelsea to draft and that we demanded, uh, returning to the district the amount of a hundred and thirty six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars, eighty five cents and cleared funds. And then also required providing a number of other documents.
Six months ago.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, uh, that, that one now. And I think what's also important is what Mr. Gaines mentioned as to when he was, his, the response that he received in asking for information to back up some transactions. But they couldn't find it, they didn't have it, Jay, I think that was your answer, the auditor said that.
Yes.
Yeah, they said there'd be no more information.
That's not an acceptable answer.
Per the O and M agreement, just like with Stony Brooks, there, this account should have been solely for the district's assets within Pelican Preserve. Over time, there was commingling of funds in, out, and, and it's difficult to, um, just like with your own personal bank statements, when you transfer money, it doesn't say transfer for a light bill, transfer for phone bill. It's just a transfer, so funds were going in and out.
With this, was this under Castle's watch?
Uh, but, yes.
So was there an exit deal with Castle to cover all this stuff? In other words, what, what part does Castle have in this?
I have no idea. That part of the deal when they switched from Castle to KW is that Castle was supposed to turn over records to all of the record keeping to KW and
It doesn't matter.
But
Our agreement is with the community.
Right, but what liability do they have a backtrack against Castle for the inability to prove
Under, under statute, because that would be the, that is not a concern, but just to answer your question, yeah, under statute, seven twenty, they have the responsibility to turn all documents. But it is a responsibility of their HOA to require those documents, go through those documents, give them proper notice of what's missing. So at the end of the day, the, the, the community is responsible.
And this is also why all financials are now here. And we are taking care of all of the money.
All right, so the, I guess what I see is two options. Uh, we already sent a demand letter, asked them for the whole hundred and thirty six thousand, whatever that amount is. And let them take their time providing it, they have not complied with that. I think if I'm not mistaken, that they actually asked for time and, and an email from Fanny, right, asking for us to work on it and which we agree on, so it's not that they haven't complied, we agree that we're gonna work on it. So that is an option number one, and option number two would be a forensic audit, and I would like, I would like to go back at least, I would say at least two years or maybe do one. And if we find enough errors or enough questions, then we'll go back. I think this is not, this is just, we cut this one time. Laura didn't go back and look at anything else, this, it was just a one statement, and this was in one statement, so
Unsupporting.
Yeah, I, I, just another question, I guess. It was mentioned before, mentioned briefly, but I think it's also important, the emails and communications going back and forth between the community association's treasurer and the district as to when the money would be transferred out, when PPCA would remove it. Uh, what they believed to be the appropriate amount to go back to them, out of the account that's currently the district's account, is that correct?
No, it is there, they are holding all accounts, we have no access to
No, 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 but there's supposed to be a district account.
Yeah, a, a signed
Assigned fully to the district. And there's money in that account that PPCA said they will take and transfer to themselves, is that correct?
Yes, a hundred and thirty six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
And they have been saying they would be doing that by, they wanted to close the books. All of a sudden, it seemed like there was a sense of, I'm not sure what the criticality or timeliness or urgency is, but that has not yet happened, is that correct, Chelsea?
Uh, I received an email earlier today saying that, um, let me see, pull it up, from the treasurer of the community association, um, requesting confirmation, I've yet to respond, uh, waiting, pending this conversation, and my phone is not
And the conversation, confirmation requested was?
Um, confirmation that the excess funds in the O and M account are in fact funds to the, um, association and that, um, they are proceeding to close the O and M account as previously discussed. A check will be drawn on the account in favor of the district, as noted in the attachments. Um, they are proceeding to close the O and M account as previously discussed. A check will be drawn on the account in favor of the district as noted in the attachments. Um, and, uh.
And what was that amount?
Uh.
I don't think.
Which we don't, which we're, we're questioning, um, that, so we're trying to work through that.
But I mean, what, it, it, it's obviously not one thirty-six.
No, they were going, go, only going to return to the district, uh.
I think it was like less than ten thousand.
One, oh, no, a hundred and. Um, let me see, the reconciliation, ninety-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, which are. Pelican funds, they're not general fund funds, just so we're clear.
So they'll go into the.
But, but they are district funds.
Yes, so district.
So I think what's important to note is that the constant statements that they are going to, while we are trying to work with them through this, they're. Going to take the steps. To transfer money out of the district designated account, I'll call it, to the PPC account. Because they believe there's money that PPC needs to have out of the district designated account, correct?
Yes.
And that's concerned.
Okay, so I guess.
I'm not sure I understand the urgency of it from an accounting.
The funding hasn't been substantiated and that's, that has been from since June, that has been the question.
All right, so.
Today it still has not been substantiated.
So, well, you're looking for a motion and direction on this from us, okay.
I will move to table this agenda item until February first. This is January fourth. This has been going on for a long time, less than thirty days to maybe, maybe. Something will miraculously appear. If it doesn't, February first isn't that far away and we can take whatever action we have that.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second? Okay, so we don't want, we have a motion and we don't have a second, motion fails.
I, I, I will second, I don't know, I couldn't unmute myself.
Okay.
That's a tough one to believe.
Sorry, laughing, see if you're waving or anything.
So, Tony, uh, so then I'll just call because.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion.
There's motion for.
To table.
So.
Until February first.
But it's a priority motion.
Oh, well, it's not part of the motion, I'll make that motion.
No, no, it is a priority motion, I'm saying motion to table takes precedent over any other motion. So you have to first order the motion to.
I'm seconded, so.
So we have a motion and then we have a motion made by Carol, a second by Bob, um, let's call for a vote. Ed.
Oh, you want to go by? No.
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 I.
I. I.
Okay. So, three, two. Motion fails.
Okay, I, I would then make the motion to proceed with the recommendation. You were saying. Let's get an independent audit of this, uh, but I, I could be one year, two years, uh. I, I, I go half, go back at least beyond the period of when this stuff started. So that we know, we can always go back if it goes back and it's negative and uncover something else. But at this point in time, we gotta find out, if we kick the can down to the road right now, we're gonna be in the same place we are right now in thirty days.
So, okay, so I just need to know if it's one year or two years.
Well, before.
But Ed, what are you gonna do if they don't have the records?
Uh, they're gonna have to pay us for it. It was there, it was there, it was there, the ball was.
And I, I think it's, there's a. The next serious step, depending upon what happens, in order to get the records is litigation, unfortunately. And whether it's an, an action for an accounting. Uh, which is an appropriate action or whether it's an action for, uh, conversion or whether it's an action for declaratory judgment. Or a number of items that might be ultimately there because if. If, if the, if the current district accountant auditor. Burger Tooms is having difficulty getting the records because. PPC says no further information is provided or their auditor says that, then. I, I think you're correct, it's not a valid basis to just say we're going to, okay, this, but you know, we are going to still go ahead with a transaction. And not give you all this money that's in this district designated account. And so that's concerning from a legal perspective because you are, everybody said you're fiduciary of the public's funds. And, and they all take it very seriously. I really, really appreciate the way you are, take that seriously. So that's the difficulty is. What records will we get? And if we don't get any additional records, we, are we gonna be down that path of litigation anyways? I, I don't know, uh. So. You know, whether we get all the records that they say they have today or whether we get all the records they say we have, they have tomorrow or thirty days or sixty days from now. The fact, the, the, the fact that the, the, the fact that Jay's getting the, the comment back of no further information. And. Jay, is that, the information that you've requested, is that something you would anticipate the association or the auditors being in the possession of to justify the transactions?
Yes. It was a reasonable request.
And that, and that request went to.
Association.
PPC.
Went to PPC.
And auditors. The response back was from the president of the.
My. If. We proceed and your, your motion was to move forward with.
A forensic audit.
Forensic audit. I'll go one year.
Can, can I come in?
Go ahead.
So. And Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, the, it's my understanding what prompted the hundred and thirty-six thousand transfer out in twenty twenty-two. Um, was because they had carried this on their books and it didn't become a, what's the?
Substantial.
Subst-.
And that's.
No. What's the term, Jay, um, when it's on your, on your audit?
Um. The audit has to go back more than that because it's a carryover.
It was a liability.
I know, but, um, it, it drew attention to their auditors that said that it was, um. Due, um, I'm drawing a blank right now, sorry.
It's materiality.
Material, thank you, thank you.
So, so then, so, or then we talking about the need and necessity to go to January one twenty-one?
Twenty twenty, that's.
Twenty twenty.
Because it was a.
I believe that's when it became material on their audit. And then, and then for some reason.
Nine thirty, right?
No.
Theirs is November thirtieth.
Yeah.
November thirtieth, so you're gonna wanna kinda tie it to that. So we're looking at their fiscal year, not January to. December thirty-one.
Okay, so Ed, so your motion would be to do a forensic audit from their fiscal year starting in twenty twenty.
No, December first, twenty nineteen.
Okay, is that your, is that your motion?
Okay, that's my.
And then.
Pay by then?
I'm sorry.
Pay by?
Yeah, definitely paid, it's not our.
So can I add just one thing in there which might help bridge this? Um, if we give them thirty days. In thirty days, if we have not reached resolution in thirty days, then we execute the, uh, the forensic audit starting from December twenty nineteen to date. Which will, 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 uh, PPAC will incur the cost. Because at least we're giving them thirty days to, to go back to say, look, if you don't give us information, we are.
That's, that's fine with me, that's.
And they can push maybe some.
So, so we, we.
That's like more days.
Yeah, so the twenty, yeah, so we give them thirty days to come up with the documentation, that'll be the motion. And if they don't, then y- y- your motion kicks in.
Okay, I'll go, you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah.
I just wonder, I want to be clear, they could say no.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Okay. But then, then, then we'll let Tony handle.
Well.
All for my part then, it's not gonna be nice.
So I'm looking for direction really on how to, how to proceed with this, but also with the request to clo- they're requesting to close the account.
So let's, let me at a time, so we have a motion, I need a second on that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second or in favor, I, in your post?
I.
Okay, so.
Bob was in favor.
Bob, are you in favor or opposed?
In favor of the motion.
Okay, so. So now second, so now we get clear direction on that.
The request, what I said earlier, based on the email I received today from their treasurer, was to close the account and write us a, a check to the tune of ninety-one thousand and some change. Because that's what they believe is due to the district.
We're not accepting that.
So. Do we accept the check? Or request, demand that the account not be closed?
Tony for.
Yeah, no, I, I think I suggested a, an email to go back to them before, I'm trying to find that Chelsea earlier today.
I have not sent it.
Wait, and who, who said that?
The treasurer, Bill Sarekko.
Okay.
Uh, bear with me.
Well, you know, guys, something's better than nothing. I mean, let's get real, if, if we gotta sue. And if we ha- end up having to pay for the forensic audit, you're talking fifty, sixty thousand right there.
Well, and I think the, I, if, if I'm Pelican. I'm concerned with this discrepancy. I want to go back and dive deeper in to make sure there wasn't something else. Now, from our perspective.
They don't want to do that.
Well, but look, but look, from our perspective, we. Our desire should be to true up.
Yes.
Based on what we know, is to true up. So if, if they wrote a check for one thirty-four below whatever tomorrow, we would be true, we walk away. I think if I was Pelican, I would want to understand where this discrepancy came from. And could there be a potential doubt, you know, uh, even backwards, but from, from our perspective.
It, they're clean if they write the check for the one thirty-six, walk away, and then there's no other exposure.
Yeah.
But, but, but let me just tie them in here. If they wrote a check for the ninety-one today.
No, not ninety-six.
The ni- the ninety-one that they offered, is that what, I thought that's the number I heard.
Yes, Bob.
Okay, if they wrote the check for the ninety-one thousand a day, I personally would be okay to not look any further, not go any further because. From a Pelican point of view, a resident there. They're, they've either paid it in taxes through us or they paid it in HOA dues. But either way, whatever the bills were, we may have paid it out of the wrong account, we may have done some co-mingling, okay, but I don't think anybody pocketed it. It was paid on behalf of the residents, it may not have been paid properly, they may not have the dues, but it was still resident money. So to support what Carol said, if, if they'll issue the check for the ninety-one, I'm done with it. I'm okay with that.
Ninety-one, Bob, just, is that just a number that, it's almost like a settlement number?
No, that's the number that was provided in an email to me today from their treasurer of, of what they reconciled to, that they believed to be what was due.
Okay.
Back to us. We have not had the chance to review, we are, when we need to review it and discuss with them.
But did they provide it, documentations to back even, no, that's what I got.
Yeah. To their point, to their point, they felt reasonably comfortable that between the one thirty-four asked. And, and those zero dollars, they feel comfortable in providing the ninety-one and we're all done with it. That to me is, is.
They become with that documentation of that.
So that's my thing, like if they had the documentation, then they wouldn't be like here. That's what you get, ninety. And if they don't have it, then how do they come up with that number?
That's what I don't.
That's why I don't get it, yes, Tony.
Yeah, my advice and guidance to the board is that until and unless there is a basis to approve. That accepting a ninety-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-three cent transmittal, which is less than what our auditors believe is due the district. Would be inappropriate, quite frankly.
Okay.
Uh, and, and I, I know it's harsh to say that, I understand what Carol's saying, I understand what Bob was saying. But in my opinion, there is not enough information for the board to make a. A, 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 a proper and appropriate decision as to whether or not the ninety-one thousand five, there are too many unanswered questions.
Correct.
And I understand the idea about settling disputes, resolving disputes, but usually there's a, a conversation where. There's an exchange of information or a lot of information is known on either side. There are so many unknowns and Jay, do you have any documents? After all your review, is there anything that would support that the district would only receive ninety-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-three cents back? And that would take care of the district being made whole of the district's taxpayers' funds?
I have not seen the documentation or that memo that, uh, she's talking about yet, so I can't make comment on that, but. Like I said earlier. The, the information we have is that the district advanced a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And there, there must be some kind of unpaid bill. But I can't believe that it'd be, uh, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Or twenty-eight and change to get from one twenty to, um. Ninety-one.
So based, we just received this this afternoon, again, all of this is coming to rush, rush, rush because I, the, the count wants to be closed, but. As of, what is this, the November bank statement?
Yeah.
The November bank statement. The November bank statement, which were January fourth, there was two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents in the account.
And the account is the account that's designated as the district.
For the district only.
Because the agreement requires the separate accounts to be established.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, uh, Tony, uh, you know, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, really have sympathy for where the whole board is. But again, as a resident. We're, we're, we're looking for a. If, if you accept the fact that every bill was paid legitimately, may not have paid from the right account, but every bill was paid legitimately and there's no fraud. If, if that's your premise, then whether it actually came out of district money appropriately. Or district money inappropriately, it still benefited the Pelican residents. And those residents are gonna make up whatever shortfall, if we come up with a hundred thousand or three hundred, they're just gonna assess our. Our, um, our, our dues, our HOA fees. So to me, it's ki- it doesn't make a whole lot of difference which pocket I'm paying out of, I'm still gonna pay it unless somebody suspects fraud. Now, there's no co-mingling of district monies because the Pelican money is designated and is specifically for Pelican. It's not Eightway or anybody else.
But Bob, there was co-mingling of the money.
That's what caused the issue.
That's what caused the issue, it, there was, it, you know, there was.
No, I, I get that, I'm, I'm with you that it was co-mingling, but it wasn't co-mingling. It, it, it's, again, it comes out of that piggyback, did I pay for it out of the district?
I get all that, but we're not responsible for the HOA, so, so, so to me.
I understand that, but we're not.
For the rest, yes. But us sitting on this board. It, it, this should be no different than how we deal with any other, I don't say Stony Brook because it's the only other one, that is, that would be, the HOA will deal with that. Like our responsibility ends. With district, HOA, anything else is not us, so.
Correct.
At the end, yeah.
I'm all together with you. I'm with you all the way, Father, the difference is, in my humble opinion. Is if it was, if the check was written from the wrong account, it's still gonna be paid for by Pelican residents. A Pelican residence is gonna pay for all of it. We're not asking Gately Greens or anybody else, it's still all Pelican money. So if we can get this all behind us for the ninety-one.
It's not because there are tax implications, they're, they're.
These are district funds, they're paid by the residents, I understand what you're saying from, I'll call it. A, a, a standpoint of what, what people pay, but these are government monies, they're public funds. And I'm not, I don't know if the premise is correct or accurate. That number one, all bills were paid properly out of the proper accounts. Or that there was no fraud, I don't know, I don't know one way or another and based, and, and, and I'm, I'm not sure if Jay can make that statement. I don't know if Chelsea can or Laura can, quite frankly.
I can.
It's no, and so that, that's, I think that, that, with all due respect, I think that's one fundamental issue. Secondly. Whether or not PPC paid bills they should have sent to the district to pay. Then tell us what those are. Uh, but to the extent that there are, was co-mingling of accounts and now there are district funds that we believe are owed more to the district and they think there's, I think. There's enough. There to say, there's not enough for the board to say, let's settle up for the ninety-one thousand.
Okay.
I don't have some responsibility, then let's just move on.
So we have two options, or, there's two options at this point. Um, the full amount that was identified by the, uh, by the auditors paid, which is the one thirty-four, one thirty-six, or whatever the number is, is paid. They have thirty days to do that. If it does not happen within thirty days, then we will, um, we will. Execute a, a forensic audit of going back to December twenty nineteen and we will bill PPAC for that. That's the two actions that, that we have on the table to take place.
And we already, we already took place, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we already approved the motion, the way to get around it, within thirty days. And the, the total amount that was identified by the auditor, if that's paid, then.
There are no actions.
Case, case closed.
Yeah.
And, and what I dropped, it was a response, and Chelsea's had a crazy day because Ford meeting day, probably so much. Chaotic, but a possible response back might be. One, the district objects to the transmittal to the district's bank account of an amount less than the number that Jay Gaines said. Number two, transmittal to the district's bank account and received by the district bank account, not. In PPC, of the amount of ninety-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-three cents. Which is less than the above noted amount of district monies due to district. Will result in PPC improperly retaining district funds, the improper retention of which the district can test and objects. And PPC must return the total amount of blank dollars to the district and the district's bank account and can say within thirty days.
Well, and.
If that's, if that.
That's.
Well, we can work on that language tomorrow, uh, but I want to be clear because you have a retainage amount. And then you have this over and above beyond amount. So the O and M was officially canceled and at the, whatever, per the O and M, January.
Terminates January twenty-first.
Really, I mean, this reconciliation, it, it, the retainage amount and this over return amount, I'll call it for lack of a better term. It's all co-mingled and needs to be. Clarified because at one point, the O and M agreement said that there was a ninety thousand dollar retainage. And then in twenty twenty, Laura found this morning, um, it was amended and the retainage went up to a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand. And making, finding where and if. And making, finding where and if that additional retainage was sent or accounted for or provided. I know last year we did a nom, a thirteen thousand not, uh, dollar value, so.
Even even the previous treasure email, it has been a different amount. It's the the two emails from the same, it's different amount.
I'm going to use Bob saying, this is a bowl of spaghetti.
Well, we have action. You'll need to work with Tony on any additional language, and then let's move.
So and final, final thing before we wrap this up, just, this letter has not been sent or provided directly to P-PAC. Um, this board at a previous meeting, I think it's in September, had said, hey, this is the forward action, bring it back to the Board of Supervisors. And and basically, the agreement with the Community Association was whatever the results of the audit. Their findings was how we were going to proceed and conclusive. And so, um, we will follow up, we'll work with the attorney tomorrow. Um, we'll try to get P-PAC up to speed um, at their meeting next Thursday with the direction that the board gave today. Um, but at at this point, it's been at a board level for since September.
When you say that they haven't received the letter, are you talking about the letter we're looking at right now? They saw it seven days ago.
So you're talking about putting this agenda item on P-PAC's agenda for next Thursday.
We want to get them up to speed with what the board.
And I think they should be.
Okay, is it, is the meeting over there?
No, P-PAC.
I'll attend the meeting as well.
Please provide the documentation behind it, you know, the original demand letter, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I think we pushed the P-PAC agenda out earlier today, but. Okay, well, well, yeah, ma'am, we will do that.
Because they need to to know some history behind this. I mean, we've been dealing this for, with this for a number of months. They're just going to see it for the first time.
No, they had, they did see it before. It wasn't as in depth. Um, we did get, make them.
When I, when I became aware, when I saw the hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar transfer that came out of the thing back in November of twenty-two. Uh, that was brought in front of P-PAC. So they're, they're aware that that's kind of what triggered this whole thing. So they they know that that happened. We did discuss that at a P-PAC meeting.
When did the transition from Castle to?
December. Ironically, this transfer happened like a week before Castle's last day.
December first of twenty.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, so let's move on to, what are we?
Okay, I will move on to agenda item eleven D. Um, except for nineteen and twenty, parcel nineteen and parcel twenty.
What are those two?
And those are the ones that the Community Association are asking to have titled to them as opposed to the district. And they want, they want these two parcels, nineteen and twenty.
Okay, so we have a motion by Carol, a second?
I'll second.
A motion a second, all in favor? So approval would.
Bob gave a.
The nineteen and twenty, okay. Propose Lee County recycling facility planning update?
Yep, well, I failed to mention this at uh, your meeting before the break, but um we hosted Lee County Solid Waste, Flavia was in attendance, um, Lee County Solid Waste here to go over their proposed recycling facility. Um, and I know Pelican residents have been very active and involved in um, the opposition of the proposal, proposed location up at the landfill. And speaking with Doug Whitehead, the Solid Waste Director of Lee County, they are in um, due diligence period. And unless a an elected body requests a public meeting um, on this item, um, they're, they don't really have any other plans to host any other meetings. Um, so out of the request that came from the residents that attended that uh, hosted meeting a couple of months ago, a month ago, um, I'd suggest that this board make the request of the county and county commission uh, to hold a public meeting hosted by the county to uh, go over this recycling, this proposed recycling facility.
The location of.
Can we ask to have it at Pelican?
Wherever, wherever I believe would be suitable for hosting a large crowd.
Would you bring up the map? Next.
We, we have a large uh, room, the Magnolia Room. We also have a theater area, so.
Yeah, the Magnolia Room and all the hills.
So the subterranean area, I think it's fifty acres is what they're, um, in the due diligence period for purchasing. It is already zoned for a recycle, what could be a recycling facility. Um, I will tell you that I did get a request from Johnson Engineering, who they have contracted with to assist with the due diligence period. Requesting where they're getting their, um, where our closest water mains are. Um, ironically enough, I mentioned that during their uh, public meeting that we had here and.
They're going to use water, isn't that what they said?
So uh, we did provide them with our closest mains, uh, understanding this is outside of our district, so they would have.
We can do that.
We would have to amend the inner local, we'd have to see what they're, they'd have to go through the normal process that any other developer would have to within the district.
Where's our closest line? Because that's up in the city of Fort Myers area. So they'd have to come off Gateway Boulevard and go due west.
The the answer that that gave us is that we're not going to use any water from you guys. Because he was very clear about that he was not going to use that, because I know a resident, I think, I think it was Stoner Brook resident that, um, John, maybe?
Yeah, where else would they get water?
Uh, there's our. Parcel. I just don't know if the supplier, the city or that's.
What is there, is there some side impact that people upset about this? Is there's, what's the side impact of this structure going in that where the red rectangle's at? What, what's?
It's noise. It's noise and odor, Ed. And it's also good, it could be high enough that residents could see it. Or loud enough they're going to hear it.
Basically, we don't want to see it, we don't want to hear it, we don't want to smell it.
They're, they're proposing to move the recycling facility that's out at Buckingham to this.
Can you just move it on the map and show uh, the board?
Might not, because I took a, yeah, it works right.
It's right there.
And if you notice, it's right next to houses.
But it's only this.
As well as the golf course.
It's only this facility right here.
Why are they moving?
Because they say they're not enough space, but then our argument is you own this entire land, and if there's not enough space, then move it here or move it here. And then they say they're getting pushback from the people because there's a field here. But then we said, well, you also own this, you own this. You own this, and you own that.
What's, what's their answer? Response to that?
Uh, this is already zoned, it's going to be easier, let's just go there.
And I think there was a cost, a proposed cost savings for the county.
That's, uh, they say it's zone, I think it's conservation, and we told them, right? I think that particular one was on conservation. And then we say, well, then flip it, like mitigate, so it's like everybody else does.
Yeah, but if they have to go through zoning hearings and all that sort of stuff, that takes time and time and time. And whereas this is already zoned, there's all, it's already there, it's got all the zoning it needs, they don't have to go through. Endless, endless studies, environmental studies, this study, that study. It's a long process.
Like, so this, okay, so here in the map, I know you guys can see it. So this is, so the argument is the ex, the existing parcel, it's already zoned for that, so just move it in a different location of the parcel. So they say that the complaint was DOT traffic. The reason why they didn't want to put it in any other area on the same parcel over there, just moving around, is because there's only one entrance in. Well, that is no different, that's how it's going to happen. If they put it in this location, so it's going to have traffic, one entrance.
So let's require, let's grant this motion.
I agree. Request the public. Out of the Pelican Preserve on behalf of the Gateway Board of Supervisors. Okay, so we have a motion a second, all in favor? And then, and then I think this is actually important. Uh, Chelsea, if Randy could put that up on the website, regardless if they accept us to move in on it, just let it know that we've made that request, prepare it, we'll keep them updated. I think that's really important.
Ma'am, just a question. Do we know whether or not any of the stormwater management will be discharging into any of the district's systems or facilities?
I, we did not.
For purchasing the property.
That's up in that area six of Pelican Preserve, I believe.
Okay, so then.
Tony, at the present time, we do get water, we in Pelican into our ponds from the existing, not this proposed site, but from the existing site, because we monitor water quality every month. So I would expect that this would contribute some additional runoff.
Yeah, and and I guess from that perspective, then the district's point of entry might be when they go to the permitting agencies for their environmental resource permit for the stormwater management system. Otherwise, because the question is, can the district get involved in the permitting process, either objecting or agreeing to it? Uh, the district noise, odor, those issues, we've had this discussion before in the past. But if it, if it's a belief that it's going to impact the district stormwater management system, there's a possible point of entry if the district's not happy.
So we have a place, point of time for input.
To the extent that they have to plot in South Florida, yes. As to that issue, it's very narrow, but that's an issue.
I mean, I just think the traffic, it's, there's no way, you know, Gateway Boulevard is county road, they're not going to say no, no trucks there.
How are they accessing, how are they saying they are accessing this site?
Yes, which. Yeah, which then, if that's the case, it's going to be one entrance, it's the same reason why they're saying they're not doing that facility on that location. You can use, anyways, okay.
Doesn't impact Pelican, but it does Gateway.
Yeah. So Griffin Roundabout Irrigation Proposals, I know we have an update on this as well, right?
Yep, I was just a second to pull it up. So um as you can see, the the medians of the roundabout are completed, but the um, exterior parts of the roundabout of the northeast southwest corners are not completed with sod, that's because they're waiting on irrigation. Um, and we're responsible for the irrigation per the inner local agreement if we want it, and it's strongly recommended considering the type of grass that's proposed out there. Don't ask me what type it is, because I don't recall. Anyway, we received um, three proposals. Um, Amerescape came in past the deadline. Um, they are, they actually updated it since then. They're about ten thousand dollars less than Manscape. Um, I received that late, so the original.
That's twenty, my math.
No, the, it's, it's even updated from that. They revised it from that. So it's, it's about, they're about ten thousand dollars less than Manscape. Um, Manscape did say, um, when we notified them that they were not going to be the low bid, that they'd be willing to match, match the low bid. Um, so ultimately, ultimately, it's, it's.
But wait a minute, Amerescape came in.
At fifty.
But after, after the deadline?
After the deadline.
Don't count it.
Fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-four cents.
Manscape out on the other day.
All right, so fifty-seven and Manscape is willing to match that, so then the, so the financial impact would be fifty-seven thousand. Fifty-nine thousand, okay. Well, with Manscape.
Awarded to me, I'll make a motion, we awarded to Manscape at the fifty-nine thousand price.
Okay, we have a motion a second? Have a second by Doug, all in favor?
Thank you.
Meter project funding discussion.
Any questions? I spent all last week on this. So ultimately, um, you all have approved um, long-term financing through the utility based on those nineteen eighty-nine bonds. Um, there was a supplemental engineer support that you all previously approved that encompassed multiple capital projects for the enterprise fund. One of them, which is the big ticket item, is the pilot project, but also tied into that is the full deployment project. We anticipate this to cost around thirteen million dollars. Um, that's box, that's brass, that's basically everything new at at the, with a meter assembly. Um, the district has. For all meters within the district.
Eighty-nine hundred?
Eight thousand something.
Yeah. Um, we have self-funded pretty much the pilot project. Um, the really what's in question is, as of right now, we're operating under the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Warranty expiration of a hundred percent. And as you all know, from that point on, it's a sliding scale by ten percent over the the following ten years. So you have two funding sources available. Three, yeah, three is not an option. I talked to the the expertise. So the first one would be to do a bank loan, and and that was what was done in two thousand and eleven with the previous uh, meter project, which was only meters at the time. Of course, this project is much larger, it's the boxes, it's everything else. Those interest rates, as you all know, they're, they're tentatively around five percent without going through the full gamut of credit approval and everything. Um, you're looking at around five percent interest on a twenty-year term.
On how much?
Thirteen.
Thirteen million?
Yeah, little.
Six to seven more in interest? All due to the five percent?
The second option is through SRF, and of course, with SRF, they have very low interest loans. Right now, they're issuing between one and two percent. SRF is contingent upon funding availability, and there are lots of strings that come attached with SRF, Davis Bacon, By America, et cetera. As you all know, with SRF, uh, there's timelines, right? You have to have a facilities plan done, you have to get that approved. You have to get on the next uh, request for inclusion, which they have those quarter, quarterly in a year. So the next available one that we may be able to get on is in May. They have to approve the RFP, we have to make sure all of the um, requirements, SRF requirements are included in the bid docs, we have to make sure our vendors meet that, there are um what's Corbett do? No, no, the um, interviews, wage, for Davis Bacon, with wage rates and things like that. So ultimately, there's, there's two, two things. The December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five deadline, and if we want to back into that date, and what's the quickest and easiest process to accomplish that? And then the second, which I just lost it. Brass. There is a eight-month lead time on brass. Now with SRF, you cannot.
What do you mean brass?
Brass for the component. So, for example, we ordered the brass components for the pilot project back in October, and they're not expected to come until May. We can't have our box vendor do, replace the boxes until the brass comes in.
Well, unless, so, and what we're saying is our the December first, twenty twenty-five is our optimal time.
That is when the hunt, a tentative, when the hundred percent.
As to the initial project. Different staggering timeframes for.
Anything after that just puts us at some financial risk.
Yes, because of the warranty on a slight.
Unless that financial risk is going to be more than seven million dollars. Then there's only one.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I would say, suggest.
Look at it, it seems like option two is, is a no-brainer. But is there anything in all these restrictions that is not going to help the project? I mean, I understand, it's more. All that sort of stuff, but I mean.
It's time.
Well, there, there is.
But it's going to be done right, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the thing is, is that it looks like to me that we're going to end up having to do a parallel course deal. Having, we pick up the tab to produce the facility plan to get the SRF loan. Concurrently, we're doing the pilot project with the hope of having the pilot project bid, done, installed, tested, and three to six month of data by the end of this year. Even then, that means we got twelve months to put in eight thousand meters.
Well.
That's going.
We don't even have that.
Saying, but we don't have, December first, twenty twenty-five is an optimal turnaround.
It's, it's correct.
But we could say our goal is twenty twenty-seven, because within that two-year gap, we won't exceed, you know, X amount.
Well, you drop that to about seventy percent, if you have any.
Because I mean, e- even if we did have some failures, you're talking about.
Well, it's, I don't think we're, we're, we're talking about that, we're talking about the, the bigger picture, they aren't here.
I think we just got a shipment this week, right? Last week, the one that.
Trust that you're not going to have an issue beyond that point. Otherwise, I agree with you, you could maybe move it out to May of twenty twenty-six or July, it's, it's rolling. Or July. It's, it's rolling the dice.
Yeah.
And if we can be prepared by the end of December, that takes all that away. We don't have it. But the issue is, is the timing is so tight right now. Let's go back to another issue. We want to make sure that we're clear on this with SRF. I talked to my people up north and that they do the SRF also. SRF typically does not pay to go on private property. So my question is, on our project we're going to be doing, we're going to have the box that goes in on basically common property. We're going to have the influence to the box, which is on our side of the meter, which is no doubt about that. That's fundable. The issue is, is on the. The backside, will SRF pay for all that backside work? That's my question. Because if that's not an SRF-funded issue, then we could have.
Move the box and make sure it's within the easement in the right of way. That's.
If you can do it, if you do it, but, but, but my point is getting backwards is that. How much money do we need? Obviously, we're not going to have the SRF uh, uh, approval to be able to purchase the, the brass. So we need to have that brass come from this other loan. In other words, minimize that.
Not necessarily, because I had, and I still have some questions that are unanswered by SRF that I'm waiting to hear back from, because one of the other exam, one of, one of the other issues is. We already have the box type and who we want to purchase it from. We're piggybacking other contracts for saving money. Normally, when you do that type of procurement, you have to put it out to bid, uh, according to SRF. I'm waiting to, for them to confirm that if we've already identified the box type and based on, because we already have them in our system elsewhere.
Include the brass?
No.
So that's my question is, if we have an eight-month delay on the brass, it seems to me that, and we have to put any money down to do it.
So here, here's, so.
How are we going to do that?
You cannot spend money until that agreement is in place. So we.
The SRF.
With SRF. So we could order, and it's a risk that we would be taking. We could order the brass, and we know it's going to take eight months to get. And timing-wise, we should have the SRF agreement in place.
But be prepared that it did.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I.
So I just, we, I, if I'm hearing correctly.
We want option two.
We want to at least proceed with option two, staff through the due diligence, and then come back with any additional risks or things that we. And then timeline that accordingly.
So I.
With our windows of December twenty-twenty-five being optimal execution, but how far, you know, what would be reasonable past?
What's the dollar value of all the brass? What's our exposure?
We're, we're trying to confirm counts right now.
So let me ask you this. So if, uh, if we have to move the boxes to, to have them in the easement, there's still going to be a cost for that.
Oh, yeah, there's.
It's just where it's at relative to EPA's, EPA and SRF are anal on spending money on private property.
Well, it's included, but I, I, I mean, if we're moving, I, I were looking at two feet, I was looking at five.
How far.
Is it more cost-effective to move it to get SRF funding or just fund that? Well, that's all the.
And I think it's going to be so difficult because I'm just thinking oak trees. You know, because you may want to move it here, so then it's covered, but then here you can't move it because uh, it's.
But again, the difference is, whatever the amount is, seven million is our.
That's, that's the ticket.
Yes, it's taken. You know, we might have a little bit more internal costs, but as long as it does not exceed seven million, then it's still the right choice.
So.
Well, well, I think option two is the right choice, but I would question the five percent rate for option one. My own gut feeling is looking out, that's probably going to be less than that. I wouldn't change the vote today. I still think the opposite scenario two is the way to go. But I think five percent is high.
Well, and Bob, that is an, an, Stephen Blum did reach out to a couple banks, um, and that is the uh. Rough estimate amount that we received. Now, there's always the opportunity for refinancing. Um, of course, there'd be a premium and, and, or even beyond the ten years, we could refinance it then if the interest rate were in, more in our favor. Uh, but for the immediate, and again, SRF is contingent upon the funding availability. So we could get to May. And they not have thirteen million dollars.
Yeah, we could crash it, bro.
Really see how the rubber beats.
Yeah, then, then, then we don't have a choice. Yeah, yeah.
So there, and last thing, SRF, their, their Laura just reminded me, their fiscal year is July to June. So a lot of their funding and projects, their August are at request for inclusion, um, meeting is heavy.
That's our best opportunity to get funds, because by the time you get to May, there may not be anything left.
Yeah.
So we have to get on it.
So, but with your direction here today, um, we will, we're, I've already asked Arcadis. Um, I notified TechTech, even though, you know, there aren't, Arcadis has been the one to help us through this project. Um, I've asked them for a proposal for assisting us with the facilities plan. Um, there's. That does metering projects. So um, there are lots of smaller group than, you know, the stormwater stuff, but um, we'll proceed and.
Typically, it's an easier project.
I hope so.
There's a little less hoops that I had to jump through as far as paperwork, but there's still.
Okay, let's, let's go back over the timeline. When are we anticipating starting the pilot?
Um, we don't know because we're not going to receive until May.
No.
No, we're self-funding it.
Yeah, but the brass is not going to be here until May.
The, the.
Is the brass that we need is part of that?
But we're, we're planning on pushing out. Again, I was waiting on your guys' decision today. The pilot project and the full deployment are all in one RFP. So I, we need to finalize that, which we're dang near close with Arcadis. Get that to SRF, incorporate their conditions in the full deployment portion only of the RFP, get their blessing on it. Push it out as soon as we can. We wanted that to be on the street for forty-five days. Ideally, we would like. Um, when the brass comes in, the box contractor, he's, he's.
So you want those two to come together in May?
Yeah. Well, box contractor has to get ahead of the pilot, of the, of the meter guys coming.
Okay, well, my, my issue is, is that when will the true pilot test start, when everything is in and operating?
Probably September.
So at best, to meet a one-year deal, we're going to get a ninety-day study. That's it. Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Do you need a motion to go, let's go with option two?
Option two, which one? Uh, I will need, we'll have to bring back, yes, I will have to bring back a resolution for us to do the application for the RFI. And I need your approval on um, a task authorization with Arcadis, so I can get that turned around and get them moving on it ASAP.
Okay, I don't have whatever she just said.
So the motion is. To continue to proceed with SRF funding, which is scenario two in the meter replacement project. And provide. Task authorization for.
We have, okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Oh, okay, so I'm motion in a second. I'm in favor.
My, my concerns, I understood that our, that the pilot project was a planning study or activity. And that they also, the cost was going to be of a certain amount to be under a threshold for CCNA. Now, if we're throwing in the RFP for the full project as well as this.
It's one in the same. It's been one in the same the whole time.
Has it, but the cost is still.
A bit three hundred thousand?
Yeah. I mean, I can look back at their task authorization. Yeah.
No, no.
No, no, the whole thing.
Oh.
The planning and study activity. It's fine.
We'll talk tomorrow.
Yeah, we need, yes, so. Uh, go ahead and the board can take the action it wants, but.
What's, what's the limitation?
Planning or studying activity, thirty-five thousand. Construction is, I'll go back to like five hundred thousand.
I think it's less.
Let me, let me, it depends on the product. Let me, I'll have to pull that, but it's. Uh, way less than thirteen million, let me put it that way.
Okay, okay.
Alright.
What was next?
District attorney.
No, district manager.
Our manager?
I don't know.
Okay, Tony's up.
Yes, um, I handed out earlier and available, we, if you recall back in December fifteenth, I, we apologize for the other parties. At the last minute, providing their input as to changes, but the board approved and the chair signed the memorandum of settlement. As well as the mutual release. We submitted that to all the other parties. Uh, it's been fully signed by one party. And then one of the other parties uh, came up with a request for a change in some language only. In the mutual lease that's between the district, Zener, Infomart, and Fordline. The one I've handed to you is the red line edits to the document. Of the mutual release that was approved by the board in December fifteenth. And the reason for this language, it was, the first sentence was included, the request at Fordline, to address some issues that they had with Zener. And the second sentence, as to their release not affecting the district and doesn't apply to the district, was language we added. Uh, we recommend that uh, this language does not have any adverse impact on the district. And we recommend that the board approve this amendment to the mutual. Release of all claims among all four parties, subject to all other parties, the three parties approving this. So if they don't approve this, and we go back to the original, it's already been signed.
Okay.
If somebody comes back with edits to this, we'll have to come back to the board.
This is essentially a Fordline generation.
Yes, sir. So we, we requested the board approve this revised red line version. Subject to the approval of this by all the other parties and authorize the chair to sign if everybody else agrees.
I'll, I'll make the motion to do that.
So we have a motion. We have a motion in a second. I'm in favor.
Thank you. It was an interesting week to say.
And you want these back?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
You want it all back?
No, just the uh.
Just the.
Yes, sir.
I already gave you mine, so.
I'm, I'm sorry?
I already gave you.
Yes, you did. Let me go to the agenda. I'm, I'm trying to, you, your electronic, so it's fighting back, right? Oh, yes. Um, this only partially answers the question that was asked by the representative from the Stony Brook at Gateway. Uh, Association in regard to paying fees. And, and, and again, it, it's becomes fact-specific. And there's a certain amount of discretion that the board has, based upon the facts as to whether or not the expenditure be. Primarily for public purpose with an incidental private benefit or primarily a private purpose. And without knowing the scope of the representation of, by the private council, it's already apparently billed Stony Brook, oh, eleven thousand dollars and so. I don't believe the district, the board is in the position to make that determination. And that's why I. My recommendation is for the board to authorize Chelsea and myself to request. That Stony Brook provide the following information for the district for review and consideration. Uh, and then I can do a follow-up memorandum as to whether or not, in my opinion, it would qualify for the expenditure of public funds. Because again, we don't know what the scope of the retainer agreement is. We don't know the scope of legal services. We don't know the scope of the work that's been performed to date.
So we're collecting information.
Yes, sir. In order to make the legislative determination that whether or not it's.
I'm sure that they will provide that to us without issues.
So if we could have a motion to authorize the, uh, district manager.
I will make that motion. I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Bob, a second by Ed. I'm in favor.
Hi.
Atlantic Southern Paving, uh, I think the. Memorandum of the executive summary is pretty self-explanatory. The board has any other separate questions, but we recommend that. Because again, for all the reasons stated in the uh, executive summary, we recommend that the board authorize the payment of the invoice to. Uh, Atlantic Paving. Atlantic Southern Paving.
So. So this is, okay.
You made that motion. Done, you made that motion?
I did.
Yeah, so we'll be, we'll be waiving the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, in other words, we, the district will absorb the twenty-five thousand dollar deductible.
So my question, I, I just have this question. They are. Is the vendor pursuing a claim under their insurance? Because if they are, then I would like us to collect it. I would like for them to put the, align items, twenty-five thousand dollars to the district.
To my, my understanding from a conversation I had with their attorney, they are not.
We're the only, because I, I thought at one point there were multiple issues with this, not just gateway services.
Multiple parties.
Multiple parties. So I, I find it hard. They wouldn't file an insurance claim.
And so I, I'm not aware of multiple parties, uh.
Okay, so I guess I would like to know if they're not going to file an insurance claim against this because they, they had costs. Then I'll probably still say no anyways, but, um, but if they are filing insurance claim, then I think a twenty-five thousand thou. Twenty-five thousand line items should be added and should be paid back to the district. I, I just would like to know that. I, I wish I had that answer now.
Uh, I got the answer from their attorney on December fourteenth. They did not receive any payouts from insurance relating to this incident.
Payouts?
That's the question.
Pay, payouts is one thing, a claim, it's a different thing.
What you're just saying is that if they get a claim, we, we want to.
Because it's not going to cost it. I, I mean, I, I understand there's a benefit. It is a vendor that we work with. I get all that. But if it's not going to cost them anything, and that's what insurance are there for, and if they, if they are choosing not to file insurance claim because they don't want their. Premium to, they don't want their money to go up, that's on them. But then we shouldn't suffer twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, my understanding is they did not make a claim. I guess I may just have asked to, to get a payout.
Yeah.
We can clarify, that's what, your sense is that you would like to have a payment. Contingent upon them either filing a claim.
Or receiving.
Okay, but if they file a claim and they're denied.
Well, then, 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 that's, that's it. And then, then we get it. But if they do, then, and they should, because that's what insurance are there for. And my expectation is that they should have filed a claim, no different than we did.
It's, yeah, and I guess, I'm trying to recall what the report says, but I'm not sure. The, the question becomes, and just if you recall, whether there's a valid basis to. Or tag them with it.
Well, without knowing the insurance policy.
No, 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 from the standpoint of the analysis of.
So should I, should I withdraw my motion?
I couldn't answer that question to you.
I think she needs to call vote for, since there was a motion seconds.
No, you didn't say, did you second? Okay, so, okay, so we have a motion?
Okay, the, the school things. Have we taken measures internally so this doesn't happen again?
Yes, ma'am.
Quickly?
Yes. Yes.
Immediately after? Okay.
And continuing to.
So.
You can remove your motion if you.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'll remove my, my motion. Ed's second, so. So, so the direction is.
I would like for uh, legal to contact them, find out if there's a possibility of them filing a claim. And if so, add this. Money due to the district.
Well, if they want to do work with us and work for us, I would think that they would go along.
That's, and that's what I'm saying, like, why are we, I get it all, it goes both ways, but I, I just feel like lately, it's us bending down and. Twenty-five thousand dollars.
And so, just so I understand, the message being conveyed is that. The board, the consensus or that, that the board is amenable to making the payment. Provided your client makes an insurance claim. Under, under a carrier. And that if your client's not successful in that claim.
We'll come back to the board.
I was going to say what happens next.
I would, because if you tell them, then we're going to forgive you, then they're going to just, I would just come back to the board, or they, or they. Or, or it's, how much was it? A hundred and thirty-one thousand? Deduct twenty-five thousand dollars for what we owe them?
Okay, but I'm just trying to get the focus of the.
I think that you will come back to the board. And then at that time, I think it's.
Board, the consensus of the board without a formal action. Was that the board is amenable to paying the invoice, provided your client. Shows evidence or proof of filing an insurance claim for the twenty-five thousand dollars. And in a timely fashion, and then letting us know of what happens. And once you find out what happens, you, we'll come back to the board for a final decision.
Exactly what I was going to say.
Okay, that's the consensus of the board.
Yes.
So let's table this to the next board meeting, if we could, I would suggest.
Alright.
So we can, I can have that conversation with.
Yeah, I, I, I think they got skin in the game, and what we're asking for is nothing major. They either file a deal or they don't.
Yeah, I agree.
Nothing else, Tony?
Uh, yeah, so a few things I had written down earlier. I checked B fourteen, that, I checked, we're trying to wrap up whether or not there are exotics remaining on that track. That's the Stony Brook track, west of Gateway Boulevard. There's the. I guess a dispute or issues of whether or not all the exotics have been removed. I don't know, Flavi, did you do a field walk, visit this today or not?
I answered that email at twelve. No, I did not. So, so, um, I, I did get, I did get a message from Margaret, which is, which is similar to the email that she sent out to us. Her and Joe went out there and there are exotics, but they're stating that they, they use a tape measure and it is on our side. I did speak with Al today because not only there was the Brazilian pepper, there was, I don't know, an acacia, another, another. I know. Yeah, there was a lot of that one there. And I don't, is Els still here?
No.
Okay, so what El was saying is a lot of the Brazilian pepper originated on the solidway side and the branches are on this side. And then a lot of it, because the way the Brazilian pepper grows in bundles, now the bulb is halfway in one property, halfway to another. So unless, at this point, unless I, there apparently there's a fence there, so I told Chelsea that I would like to meet with her and Al and actually walk the area.
Yeah, and, and I guess to the extent that the branches are hanging over.
They get to be cut.
It can be cut. And then the, also may want to notify Lee County.
And that's what Margaret asked, and I, I have no problem with that.
On their side of the fence.
I, I, I'm, I'm totally okay with that.
Al has already been in contact with police candidate.
Okay.
And the form of the documents were fine, and Darren Scott, your attorney.
Then I have.
He's gonna do it. I'll get a property information report, so.
I mean, I can go there tomorrow.
Yeah, so that's the only lingering issue of the exotics, from that perspective. We can wrap that up.
Would be really nice if. Police made it, went back there and cleared that.
Yeah.
Made that area, especially when they're, you know.
They wouldn't have to do anything.
A recycling facility, that?
Yeah, now would be a great time.
Do you want to reach out to Doug?
Yeah, well, I need to find out with Al. I know she's already been in contact. I don't know with who, so I'm gonna find out where, where they're at, but, yeah, we can schedule. I don't, I don't necessarily know tomorrow, maybe next week, some time to go and, and visit the site.
Yeah, I don't want to delete this and, you know, for Stony Brook, I want them to.
Yeah, we've been asking for like a month.
Yeah.
What's the status, so?
Okay.
Another item is on the AGO request revised for the roads in Stony Brook. I did an initial draft, rough draft of a letter, sent it to their attorney. She'd be getting comments back from her shortly, so, and hopefully bring that to the board, hopefully the next meeting, if not, then the first meeting in February. And one, one other item is cameras on the Stony Brook gatehouse. The idea was that we'd have a letter agreement where the district could allow. The association to maintain some cameras at the gatehouse at Stony Brook and provided they acknowledge it was theirs, not ours, so we don't have a public records issue. And we just have some language that's using that letter agreement that we're talking about, trying to resolve. Hopefully we can get that done by the next board meeting.
Are these new cameras or?
They've been there a while. Yeah, and, and so those cameras are expensive.
You sent?
About the cameras?
Requesting the documentation, if you have any.
No. Yeah, there was, there was a, a, one email that indicated that there may be a possibility the board approved.
Yeah.
You know, this years ago, so I asked, do they have it? And as opposed to me rooting through all my minutes.
Well, I think it's important that.
Yeah, I don't have yet. That was just about two days ago, I think.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Nothing else? Future for business, agenda management?
Yeah, administrative building. January tenth is next week.
Yes, that is.
You have good news?
Yeah, well, that.
Are we permitted now?
We have the ERP, which we, we received today. These are items that we have for the president's council meeting next week. And so we've finalized the frequently asked questions, and so that's on the agenda for next week, but. We did receive comments back last week from the county nominal, but it is gonna require a third resubmital, which I'm told. Will be done by the end of this week, so tomorrow. But good news is we've received all of the, we've received the permit, the ERP. I started reaching out to the utility providers, TECO, FPL, et cetera, cuz those typically have long lead times, so started Internet, Comcast. CenturyLink, started reaching out to those to start to get the ball rolling. We've got quotes on the AV equipment. Which again, that has a long lead time, hoping to bring that in front of you sooner than later. Meet with a couple furniture companies over the next week or so to get a better estimate on furnitures, fixtures and equipment for the building, so. We're close. I, I'm told that I should have the ITV, the bid documents for my review by the end of the month. Hoping, Lee County has typically been taking forty five days to review, being that this is a very small recent metal. We don't anticipate it to be forty five days. So we're. Moving.
Fine, we're looking at March?
Uh, probably out to bid by the end of February, hopefully.
Well, and then there's bid time.
Yeah.
By the time we get it back and approve and whatever, we're looking at March. April?
May, May.
May?
There isn't any brass.
So you have anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of things. First one, where are we at on that conference call or that statute issue with the sunshine? Want to get that taken care of. The, when we all have to take that for our course.
Oh.
You mean? We were gonna have one of our vendors.
We're gonna wait because I guess they're gonna provide one for free, otherwise we have to pay for it.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying.
I acted, I was waiting till after the first of the year to get, to reach out to FASB.
Okay, next one, any, we didn't get, what's any anticipated date for the roundabout being done? Better than I thought, okay. And the last one, the FPL easement up here, the, the bush and the debris and the jungle growth. That's looking bad. In the easement on the left hand side, west of Gateway Boulevard, we cleared that at one time and we didn't totally clear it, but I mean, there's.
On the south side of.
Yes, south side of the access road. Looks horrible. That's all I had.
Bob? You, I muted you, Bob. I just, you didn't, you said.
Yeah, I, I have nothing. I'm good. I saw you muted me.
You're noisy. All right, so with that. You can motion to adjourn.
I think you.
I think I won.